The day and hour having come, the warrant having been served and returned, and a quorum being present, I hereby call this annual meeting of the Town of Shelburne to order. We will act on the warrant as printed and any other business that may lawfully come before this town meeting. Good evening and welcome to our annual town meeting. It's nice to see you all here. It's nice to have a full hall. So hopefully we'll be able to have some good discussions on things that need discussing. So we will proceed with today's town meeting in the traditional manner. It is my hope that we have a safe, efficient, and effective town meeting. Here are the protocols for this annual town meeting. Voters will sit in the designated areas and household members may sit together within the same designated area. Residents who are non-registered voters and other guests will be seated in a separate area and may be recognized to speak to an article but cannot vote. If there are no objections, I request that we use these voting cards today. You all should have gotten a set when you registered. In my opinion, it is better method of voting than the voice votes as it allows each individual equal value when voting. Are there any objections? Okay, hearing no objections, we will use the voting cards. We ask that you remain seated throughout the meeting except to call the question, call for a vote count, state a point of order, speak from the microphones, to use the restroom facility, or to leave. This meeting is anticipated to last several hours. After each hour of business, the chair will call for a five-minute recess to allow everyone to stand and stretch as needed to prepare to continue our business. Please be mindful of the time. Please silence your electronic devices now so that we have the least number of interruptions. Now, before moving on to the warrant, it is my pleasure that I introduce those up front here. I am Roland Jaguerre, the town moderator. We have to my right, the town council Donald McNichol. We have our town clerk Joe Judd. And we have select board members. Andrew Baker. Tricia Yakavon Biagi. And Rick LaPierre. LaPierre, sorry. I did that on purpose so that people know exactly how to say your name, LaPierre. And we have at the end our town administrator Terry Narckowitz. Oh, Biagi, not Biagi, okay. At this time, I will call for a moment of silence for William Richard Sweeney, who passed away on March 12th, 2025, at the age of 92 in Bennington, Vermont. Bill, as he is known, served the Town of Shelburne in many capacities, including 20 years as town moderator. Okay, now I'm going to ask Mr. LaPierre for opening remarks, so I'm going to turn the mic over to him.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone, on behalf of the select board, my fellow select board members, the finance committee, and all the good folks who volunteer their time or were elected, which is also volunteering basically their time to put together all the warrant articles, the hours, the weeks, the nights of work to put it together. Just can't say enough how important it is that people in a town like this step up and contribute to governmental process. I hope everyone has picked up a copy of the warrant, a copy of the finance committee's report, and a copy of the annual report. In the annual report, I'd just simply like to point out that it is dedicated this year to Leslie L. Chadwick. He served as Shelburne's Veteran Graves Officer from 1984 until his passing in 2004. Each year, less meticulously inventoried five cemeteries in Shelburne, ordered flags, and placed over 700 on veterans' graves before Memorial Day. Also, James T. Richardson. James was elected as an assessor for the town in 1983, served in that capacity until 2020. He was a strong advocate for the farming community, playing a key role in eliminating the excise tax on farm animals and equipment. In 1999, he was elected tree warden and continued in that role until his passing in March. Other than that, I have nothing to say. Welcome, everyone. Let's get to business.
All right. Well then, we will move. Okay, we move on to the warrant. All right, we have 39 articles on the warrant to be addressed by this town meeting. Please follow the articles on your warrant. To expedite our proceedings, in traditional fashion, I will read an abbreviated version of each article. In general, language within brackets and italicized language within the parentheses are commentary only. After an article has been introduced, an motion has been made and seconded, I will recognize the maker of the motion to speak first. I will then ask the finance committee if they have a recommendation on the article. To ask a question or make a comment, please proceed to one of the microphones and wait to be recognized by the chair. When recognized, clearly state your name and street address. Please organize your thoughts and limit discussion to the motion on the floor. Speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone will hear and be able to understand you. Please be prudent of the length of your comments so that we may adequately address our business in a timely manner. The proposed omnibus budget, Article 7, having been published and available to the residents for study for the required time, will be acted on as a unit. As with all articles, I will entertain a motion to bring it to the floor for discussion. We will then hold individual line items that voters wish to discuss or amend, and then act on them individually and in the order presented in the article. Once we end discussion on the individual line items, we will then act on the original motion as amended. All voting today will be by card system rather than voice votes. Voters will have received at the check-in table a yes card, a no card, and a staying card for voting. The votes will be counted for all motions requiring a two-thirds vote. The votes will also be counted when the chair is in doubt of, or a voter rises, raises a card, is recognized by the moderator, and requests a count. If seven voters support the request, a count will be taken. When a count of votes has been ordered by the chair and the requested vote has been asked, all voting per request will hold their vote card up until instructed by the counter of their vote to lower their card. The counters are instructed to count the votes row by row. Make sure you are paying attention to when your vote is counted. We do not want to miss anyone's vote. Abstentions will be called for and counted at the discretion of the chair. Now I will ask the town clerk if he would introduce the counters so you know who's going to be counting your votes.
Yes, I will. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So will the counters please stand where you are? There they are. That's Sue Bishop and his parents and Sherri Clark. They're the counters tonight. Thank you, ladies, for coming and helping like that. I know you've done it for years, so thank you.
Thank you. If discussion becomes lengthy, a member may rise, raise a card, be recognized by the moderator, and call the question. There is no debate, and a two-thirds vote is required to end discussion. If the vote is affirmative, the maker of the motion is allowed 10 minutes to address the matter according to Shelburne town bylaws. To make an amendment, please write it down and proceed to the microphone to be recognized by the moderator. Be prepared to submit it to the town clerk if requested.
Go ahead. This year, we're going to try something a little different with amendments. We're going to have you do them in writing. The counters have the document that you would just fill out. There it is. It's very brief. Then you will give it back to them. They will take it to the moderator as your amendment. We'll have a record of it going forward, and it might be a little more orderly in that should. So thank you for helping us try this for the first time.
Okay, and if you know you're going to make an amendment, please be prepared ahead of time with that. Okay, so let us begin. Article 1, to hear the annual reports of the officers of the town and to act thereon. So moved, Mr. Moderator. Mr. LaPierre, moved?
I'll second.
Ms. Biagi, no, Biagi.
Yeah.
Seconded. Thank you. Okay, so any discussion? Are there any reports we need to hear before we vote? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, show your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, show your no cards. Okay, motion is approved. Unanimous. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to set salaries of the elected officials as further described in the warrant or take any other action thereto.
So moved.
Ms. Biagi moved. Seconded. Mr. LaPierre seconded. Okay, would Ms. Biagi like to speak to the motion?
Yes, you will notice that salaries all increased by three and a half percent. The only exception to that is the town clerk, and that was to raise his salary to be commensurate with other town clerks in the area.
Okay, does the finance committee have any recommendations on the article? They do not. So is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is unanimous. And one abstention. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow money from time to time and to issue a note or notes and to renew any note or notes as further described in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I so moved.
Mr. Baker moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Biagi seconded. Okay, would the maker of the motion like to speak to the article?
Just that it's a standard article that allows us to borrow money for things like our school capital costs, our highway trucks, and things that we make payments on.
Does the finance committee have any recommendations on the article? Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements for fiscal year 2026 as further described in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
So moved.
Mr. LaPierre moves.
Seconded.
Ms. Biagi seconded. Okay, Mr. LaPierre, do you want to speak to the article, to the motion?
Only that these first few are standard operating procedure we do every year for the smooth operation of the business of the town.
Does the finance committee have any recommendations on the article? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to apply for, execute contracts, and expend grants or monies as further described in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Biagi moves. Seconded, Biagi. And Mr. LaPierre seconded. Okay, Ms. Biagi, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, this is also one of the warrant articles that helps us run the town smoothly when we are able to apply for and hopefully receive grants.
Okay, does the finance committee have any recommendations on this article? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, vote by your yes votes. Downhand, the down cards, all opposed. Raise your no cards. All right, motion is approved unanimously. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to accept and appropriate any and all funds provided to the town by the state and to authorize the select board to enter into contracts for monies allocated to the town by the state as further described in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I so moved.
Mr. Baker moves.
Seconded.
Mr. LaPierre seconded. Okay, would Mr. Baker like to speak to the article, to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just this is the article that allows our highway department to do all of its good work without adding to our tax bill. And so one of the pieces of good news here is that Chapter 90 is being proposed for significant expansion this year in the legislature. So if that goes through in the budget, we should have additional money to fix up our roads. And our highway superintendent is completing a million-dollar Masworks grant-funded project on Old Greenfield Road this year. So those are some examples of what this article helps us do.
Any, does the finance committee have any recommendations on this article? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, if I may.
Mr. LaPierre.
Could I just ask you to repeat the finance committee's recommendation? Because I'm sure more than half of the people can't hear what their recommendation is.
Okay, in this article, or in this motion, the finance committee supported the article. Oh, supported, okay. So, any other discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. All right, Article 7, omnibus budget. All right. To see if the town will vote to appropriate sums of money for the purposes listed, beginning with moderator's salary and ending with Memorial Day totaling $6,245,935, and to raise the required amounts as further described in the warrant or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so moved.
Mr. LaPierre moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Biagi seconded. Okay. Now is the time to discuss or amend any of the line items in the proposed omnibus budget. Before any discussion or proposed amendments occur, I will ask which line items any voter wants to discuss or amend. We will do this section by section. Once a list has been compiled, we will act on those line items one at a time in the order listed in the article. Let us proceed. Okay? All right. Section General Government. Any line items anybody wants to hold out? Moderator? Wait a minute, first, this. Ms. Walsh, right?
Yes. Any item that's a 5% or more?
Which? No. Call out which line items you want to hold out.
I have a right reading. General Government salaries. Assessors' expense. Assessors' contracted services. General expense. Town clerk's salary. Town clerk's expense. Preservation of town records. Wind scars. Wind street pocket, park police. Computer accounts. And highway. County retirement. Unemployment insurance, health insurance. Medicare.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I, okay, after computer account.
What number is that? Oh, I see it. Okay, uh, let's see. County retirement. Unemployment insurance, health insurance. Medicare.
Mr. Baker. Just have a suggestion that might be most efficient. If the questioner is amenable to have our town administrator. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is.
Just to have our town administrator run down those overages and explain why that's over 5%.
Okay. All right, can we go on first and see what other articles are pulled out? And then we can go back to that. Okay. All right. Is there any other articles on General Government that need to be held out?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.?
Joe Judd?
Mr. Judd, sorry.
I was going to hold out the town clerk's expense and the town clerk's salary myself. Thank you, Jackie, for doing that. And to take some of the burden off of Jerry, I would like. I was going to, perhaps we should turn this up if we can. I was going to call, I was going to hold the town clerk's expense and the town clerk's salary out myself. Thank you, Jackie, for doing that. And to take some of the burden off the town administrator, perhaps it would be okay for me to explain those two line items if that's all right.
Well, that will be at the time of discussion. Right now, we're holding articles, but I will keep that in mind. There's no other articles under the General Government to hold out? Then move on to Public Safety. Any articles to hold out on Public Safety? Yes?
Reverend Dr. Danny Johnson, 210 Police Department salaries and Police Department expense. Just clarification about what that's for.
Okay. Any other articles under Public Safety to hold out? Okay, we'll move on to Education. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Listen, your class, everything that has a 5% or more, please, then, I'd be glad to be.
Please.
Okay.
The first two have already been held out.
Yes, emergency management expense. Do you need the numbers?
No, I think it's short enough, we can hold that.
Franklin County Tech. Highways.
Wait, you've gone beyond, you've gone beyond Public Safety.
Oh, sorry.
Any other articles under Public Safety? Then we'll move on to Education. Please stand with you so people. Octroy Regional School, okay. Any other articles to hold out? Ms. Walsh?
Franklin County Tech.
Franklin County Tech. All right, any under the highways? Yes, Ms. Walsh?
Yes, highway grant writing and highway maintenance.
Highway grant writing, highway maintenance. Any other articles? Okay, health sanitation? Anybody? No? Recreation, any articles under recreation? Yes, Ms. Walsh?
Recreation, housing, and desert.
Okay, and we have another one here?
632 Bridge Flowers.
Bridge Flowers.
Mr. Moderator, could we please clarify what Ms. Walsh? She said recreation, but I don't know if she meant the line item 6305428 or the heading.
The line item.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then there's only one more to hold out. Nobody's holding it out, so we'll move on to Human Services, excuse me.
Paul Police, Lori Wheeler, send me one, A Lane Street. The one about 5425 Arms Library, please.
Arms Library. Any others under Human Services? Yes?
Paul Hollins, 41, Mechanic Street. And this is not directly per the question. I'm just wondering if somebody could say something about why it's going up so much overall? Numbers have talked about it, and just going through it one by one doesn't give us a big picture. The school budget's only running by 3 and 1/2, between that and the others is going up by about 15 on that. So I'd just like to suggest.
After we're done this process, then yes, that might, that might be so that nobody wants to discuss some of those. So we'll see. But first, any other articles to hold out? Yes? Okay, West County Senior Service District. Okay, any other articles under Human Services? Okay?
I'm a counsel on aging.
Okay, Ms. Walsh requests counsel on aging. Okay, anybody else? She did. 5424, which is Shelburne Free Public Library? We'll hold that one out, fine. Any others? Okay. Now, I will, as requested by several people, I will ask if either the town administrator or somebody else to explain, give an overall view of the increases. And then maybe that will precursor some of the discussion. Does anybody want to do that, or should I just take one item at a time?
I think that every budget line item is sort of independent of itself, so to give a broad discussion that would encompass them all, I think, would be impossible.
Okay, we'll take them one at a time. Okay, we'll go back to General Government. Okay, line item 1225110 called General Government Salaries. Anybody want to discuss that one? Or any motion, anybody want to make a motion? Either way.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Judd?
I would like to discuss. I would like to discuss, uh, line item 1615100 and 1615400. I'll start with 1615100.
161...
That's, that's not the item.
Right, we're not, right now, we're on general government salaries.
I'm sorry.
That was held out.
I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, any, uh, there's no discussion on that? Hearing none, we proceed.
Can you speak up, please?
Okay, go to the microphone. Yeah, go to the microphone if you're going to speak on any of these. Identify your name and your address and then we can proceed.
Susan Aggie Nichols, 11 Maple Street. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm wondering, we're jumping into each line and the recommendation by a gentleman out back, and I think would be beneficial to me, and also the finance committee has a nice write-up of what is actually happening with the overall budget. By chance, could we have them speak to that before we jump into each line item and vote?
Well, the procedure would be each line item, but the finance committee can speak to any one of these line items when they come up. So if they have anything to say on the line item. So, is there any discussion on general government salaries? Yes, if you, if you would like to.
Microphone.
Okay, go to the microphone, please.
Hi, Todd Durell, 510 Little Law Room, Finance Committee Chair. So, I mean, this is pretty broad discussion on, like, why are we going up so much in town? Most of where the increases are in wage classifications for town employees. Did you have a hard time hearing it better? So that's, I mean, there's a rebroadcasting on there, that's what it is. The Police Department clerk salaries, there was a bunch of work done this year to bring employees in the town up to par with other towns with their salaries. But to speak to every single line, uh, that, that would take a long time and I'd have to actually go back for notes to be able to actually delve into that. But the big increase is, I think, would anybody agree with me or not agree with me on that? That's where the most of it is for the town. In part time.
Okay, and is, is there, uh, any other discussion on this particular article? All right, hearing none? Um, well, there was no motion made, so we will proceed on to the next...
Do you need a motion to accept that line item?
No.
Okay, these are really just informational questions.
Right.
Of why did it go up so much?
Right. There's no, no action taken, then there's no action taken. It stands as it is. We'll vote on the whole budget at the end. We have a motion already on the floor to accept the budget as is. So, right now, we're going through, see what amendments need to be made to that motion. So, art, um, line item 1415400, assessors' expense.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
May I speak to that? The reason for the increase in this budget is directly related to a new laptop purchase in the amount of $2,000. Uh, currently, we have one laptop that we share between multiple departments.
Steven Up.
The increase in the assessors' budget is directly related to a $2,000 laptop purchase.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, none, we proceed to line item 1415403, assessors' contracted services.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The, the assessors utilize an outside contractor for the valuation of properties. There's done cyclical, they do a third of the town's property annually. The prior year, we had a reserve amount in that account to offset the overall expense. This year, we had to raise it by taxation.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? All right, we'll proceed down to, uh, line item 1455405, payroll expense.
Mr. Moderator?
Proceed.
This budget line item has increased because the number of employees increased when Shelburne merged with Buckland's Police Department.
Any other further discussion on this? Then we'll, uh, proceed down to line item 1615100, and I will recognize our town clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Oh, as you all can tell, I'm a little bit anxious to speak about this. I'm sorry for that, not so much for myself, but for the position of town clerk. Uh, I've been the town clerk at Shelburne for 11 years now, and, uh, I have learned a ton in those 11 years. And what I have learned is that, uh, or what I've seen evolve over the years that I've been town clerk, and as some of you can attest to who has worked with me closely, uh, the duties and the, uh, and the operation of that office has changed dramatically. Uh, last, uh, winter, I went and met with the finance committee informally, and I discussed this with them, and I did a survey, which I am happy to share with any of you tonight to show you, in relation to the salaries of, uh, 10 different towns that are a comparison, or that are comparable to Shelburne in relation to the salaries that they were paying, uppaying their, their town clerks, you know, the position of town clerk. And I found that Shelburne was, uh, about the second lowest in that group. Uh, when I did this survey, it raised the eyebrows of a few people, uh, and what I'm basically trying to do is to not only bring a little more credibility and respect to that position, also lend it to, lend to it the, the, uh, the idea that the town clerk's position in Shelburne, no matter who is in it, whether it be myself or any one of you someday, you know, is worth the dollars that the, uh, that the office tries its best to, to give you in the service that we, that we offer. Um, it was not easy to do this. The finance committee, uh, was, uh, very helpful and it put me through my paces, just like you would expect them to do, because they're a good finance committee. We brought it to the selectmen later on, they were also surprised to see how the survey came out, they did their own research. And we came up with the number that you see in the town, uh, town more today. It's not the highest amongst the 12-town surveys, it's not the lowest, it's right in the middle, but I believe it's a number that's fair and will generate a good portion of, uh, interest in the event that somebody wants to run against me someday for town clerk or wants to run themselves, um, once they understand the, uh, the amount of, uh, of, of duties that, that, it encompasses. The role of town clerk works under 451 Mass. General Laws. Now, I don't know every one of those laws, but I know how to find them. And, um, the, the encompassing, um, uh, part of that is that every one of those laws can come up at any moment and you have to be able to find them and work through them. Not only to mention the elections, uh, the census, which is a dumbo problem, just a juggernaut of a vehicle. Um, and the elections itself, just to let you all know, we have about 1,790 residents in the town of Shelburne, we have 1,563 registered voters, which is a pretty good number. So the rest of them must be children, maybe? I don't know. But, um, I think that this, that this position has sort of been left out over the years, and I'm trying to bring it back to a place where I think that it's fair and equitable in regards to the services that the office gives. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, over here. Please approach the microphone.
I'm loud, it's okay.
No, please approach the microphone. Thank you. And you may come and stand near the microphone if you, uh, have a question, know you're going to ask a question, then that way, um, it'll be quicker.
Danielle Palatier, 303 Shelburne Road. As you stated, you were, you've been in this position for 11 years.
Can you hear you?
Since you've been in this position for 11 years, what additional expenses are bringing up the salary, the clerk's expense to 240%?
Right, right now, we're on the town salary, town clerk's salary right now. You can stay right there and we'll get to that in a second. Is there any other discussion on town clerk's salary? Was there? No? All right, then we'll proceed on to town clerk's expense. You may proceed.
Are you making questions?
Well, you, if you want to.
All right, question still stands. Uh, you've been in this position for 11 years, what additional expenses are bringing up the 240% increase?
Thank you for asking that question, Danielle, and, you know, I was going to speak to this on that line item. You know, honestly, the expenses themselves, the expenses themselves have gone up, but not what you might think in regards to a 240% increase. The expense that I'm talking about in, in, you know, in relation to the role of town clerk is honestly the perpetuity of our, of our office. You know, I'm not always going to be town clerk, you know? And when somebody else becomes town clerk, what I'd like to see is not have them go through what I went through for the first two or three years of my time, floundering and not knowing really what the role encompassed. So this increase basically shows what it would cost to hire a assistant on a very part-time basis to start, to come in and begin to learn the ropes, to be able to not only offer a little assistance to me, but also learn things that might help later on if they themselves decide to run for, for town clerk someday, or if a, a new town clerk came in, just think what a, what a help that person could be to them, so they're not floundering in the first few years. Uh, other towns have assistants that have been much broader based than this, and I honestly expect as time goes on, this may actually turn into a larger line item. But right now, it's on an as-needed basis, and my hope is to teach someone as we move through the process slowly, what, what the duties of the office encompass, so that can continue on into the future.
All right, Mr. Durell? Okay, is there any other discussion on the town clerk's expense? Then we'll proceed on to preservation of town records. That's line item 1615408. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? We'll proceed.
Moderator?
Nope, yes, Mr. Baker.
Just to note that that is an eligible expense for the Community Preservation Act, so next year, I would hope to see that coming from that direction.
All right, any other discussion? Then we'll proceed to 1625409, registers. No discussion on that? Registars.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Judd.
Uh, what I did, the registrar's duties of, who work for me as the town clerk, uh, have, have grown over the years, especially due to the intenseness of what our elections have been, have become over the last few years. They're called upon now to do more work than they ever have, they'll, they'll be called upon to do more as time goes on. So I have, uh, I am asking that we increase their salary a, a small amount and also the expense line, uh, well, there is no expense line here, but basically to increase their salary to a point where it's a little more, uh, a little more equitable. Plus also, I'm sorry, there is an expense part of this, and that goes for things like doing the census, uh, doing a street list, which is very important to do, which the state requires. Um, so it's a, it's a line item that, you know, generates work that the registrar's do, plus work that we have to do based on the census.
Any further discussion? Any questions? We'll proceed on to, uh, line item 1825444, Bridge Street, uh, Pocket Park lease.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Baker.
That increased, that pocket park is leased from a, um, a limited liability company called the Ancient Glacier. And, uh, they, according to their, um, accountant, need to show a very small profit to make, remain in business, so they, they have shown a profit of about $50. Um, but most of that increase comes from the increase in the tax valuation of the property, which we, um, we pay on, to, for them, essentially. They, they pay the taxes, we reimburse them, so it's kind of a break-even, uh, project. But that's, that's our cost as a town for maintaining that lot as a town park. Any further discussion?
Deborah Andrew, 165A, Reynolds Road. Deborah Andrew, 165A, Reynolds Road. Um, I'm troubled by this entire process with this lease. Um, when it was first proposed, this pocket park, the community was asked to give the select board permission to negotiate a lease without telling us what might be in that lease. Quite frankly, I feel the lease was very much to our disadvantage as a town. These are very privileged people who happen to own this property, I don't think they need a profit. Forgive me.
Any further discussion?
Can you hear me? I'm Josh Simpson, I live at 30 Frank Williams Road in Shelburne. And my partners and I own Ancient Glacier LLC. We bought that property, uh, thinking that we could put some lipstick on the building that was there, and we couldn't, it, the building was, anyway. We took the building down, um, the town taxes us, and our, the rent we charge the town is somewhere, maybe, maybe it's $50, maybe it's $100 more than the actual cost that we are charged to have the land. So, you're right, we are privileged, but, but the profit that we're making is not overwhelmingly amazing. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any other questions? Any, uh, comments?
Yes, Mr. Moderator?
We're...
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm very pleased that Mr. Simpson is here, because, uh, when we discussed this at a select board meeting, the explanation that, that we received about the reason for the increase in the pocket park lease amount was that the expenses went up due to some, um, what was it, an expense of the drawings that were made for, uh, the landscaping that were not used? What is that word I'm looking for? Would you care to explain how that was being, um, depreciated and that's how, that's why the lease, uh, had to increase this year?
Would, would you be able to answer that?
I'm not sure I can actually answer it accurately. It's true that at one point before the pocket park, park was leased to the town, we planned to build the park, and we asked a landscape architect, who was related to me, as he is my son, um, uh, but he's a registered landscape architect. We asked him to design a park that we could then build and basically have, present the town with a park. And that ended up, he charged us absolutely minimal amount of money, I'm not sure exactly what the amount was. And, and, uh, we did amortize the cost that he charged. It, it might have been $900 or $1,000 for a huge amount of work that he did. And, um, when we, when we took the building down, we could have left a hole there with a chain link hilt surrounded, but we, we didn't do that. We filled it in with good loam so we could plant grass, we planted grass, and we tried to make it as nice as we possibly could at the time, not knowing what was going to, exactly was going to happen. And we do pay insurance on that property, um, which has gone up, but again, I, I... But again, I, I really want to stress that this is not a big moneymaker for us.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to line item 192-5411, computer account.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
This budget includes the purchase of three new PCs that are no longer, they're at end of life. And now we're operating with Windows 11, and we need new computers that are compatible with that software.
Any further discussion on that line item, computers, computer account? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to line item 911-5400, county retirement.
Reverend Dr. Brian Johnson, H. Church Street. This is point of order. Since we already heard saying that many of the line item expenses dealing with human resources and salaries, can I make the suggestion that all of those line items that interact with salaries, like workman's comp, health insurance, Medicare, et cetera, be answered by the fact that it is due either increased numbers of staff or the infrastructure needed for a particular line item?
I...
That's a point of process.
I cannot make that assumption that that's the only reason why it was called out, held out. So I'm going to continue doing one at a time. If there's no discussion, no anything, we'll just skip over it.
Okay, but given how many there are, you're adding half an hour.
We're, we're halfway through anyway. All right, you have something to say on line item county retirement?
I'm just here to explain it. With the Senior Services District...
Speak into that microphone.
With the Senior Services District, starting this bill is generated from employees who are part of the Franklin Regional Retirement System. Normally, the bill, I use all the employees that are in it to calculate how much each department owes. And the senior center pays their share, but then leaving, the town has to take over their share. However, it's going to be offset because we plan on billing them for their share until they join the retirement system and then get voted for.
Are there any other, any other discussion on line item county retirement? Okay, we'll move on to 913-5400, unemployment insurance. Do you want to speak on it?
Could you introduce yourself, please, Angel?
Angel Bracken, 139 Oldbury Road. I'm also the treasurer and tax collector. This one is directly related to the police, more employees. They do a lot of off-duty details, and this is calculated on gross salaries. So I'll explain something.
Any other discussion? We'll move on to 914-5436, health insurance.
Mr. Moderator? We, we get our health insurance for the Hampshire County Insurance Group trust, and they're seeing an 18% increase from FY '25 to FY '26. We've been trying to budget a little bit extra every year, but apparently didn't do well enough because we're getting ours is going up more than 18%, but this is a cost that is kind of out of our control.
Any other discussion? Then we'll proceed to line item 916-5400, Medicare.
Mr. Moderator? This also has to do with the police and the percentage from payroll. This one also has to do with the police department growing and the percentage is calculated based on gross payroll.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Baker?
Angel, can you, can you just clarify or say again what you said about this getting reimbursed over the other way? These, these costs are all rolled into what Buckland pays us back, right?
Yes, so we'll get a little bit of the unemployment, health insurance, and Medicare back from Buckland.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on line item Medicare? All right, that finishes the general government. Oh, you have a question on what Angel said? Yes, may I ask a question? Thank you, Namon. Namon is dressed.
Suzette A. Nichols, 11 Maple Street. It was actually on the county retirement line. It was on, my question was on the 5400, the county retirement line. And Angel, I don't know where you are. You mentioned something about the West County Senior Services District, and that is the reason the cost increased. I'm a little bit confused about that because I thought the senior center was part of our budget in the past, so I don't understand why we're seeing such a big jump.
You may answer.
I'd like to.
Like you're eating the mic.
So the senior center used to pay their share of it, which was not included in this line item, but because they're not going to need a town department next fiscal year, the town has to pay their share of the bill for FY '26, but we're going to bill them for it. So the money will come back and it will go to free cash.
All right, any other discussion on that? Then we'll move on to public safety. Line item 210-5110, police department salaries. Hearing nothing, we'll proceed on to 210-5400, police department expense.
Roll them in by me.
Mr. Baker?
I think the people who are holding these out just want a quick explanation of why they're more than 5%. So I don't know, Terry, do you want to be there?
I understand that.
Well, the question was raised at the beginning.
And Finance Committee Chair Todd Dubreal explained that the increase was directly related to a wage and classification study for the salaries.
There's Walsh, you still have anything, you know? No, that, you, I'm recognizing you because you stood up, tried to speak.
Maybe the police chief could address whether the combining the two departments will, in the end, meaning the spending on police will not have such high increases or maybe go down. I forget what was said when that combination happened, but I'm curious about that.
Does Mr. Bardwell want to address this meeting?
Jackie Walsh, 139 Bridge Street.
Good evening, Greg Bartle, other side of Bridge, Melton Street, Buckland. So I, I guess to answer your question, I can't necessarily answer that with 100% confidence that things are going to level. I can't promise everybody that we're going to level funds for the next couple of years. This increase in department salaries was after the town voted last year to extend $10,000 on the wage and classification study, which hasn't been done in numerous years. With the changes in, in law enforcement, and the, and posts now being a part of Massachusetts, and mandates that we face in regards to training and so forth and so on, I think that's where this, this significant increase came about. As far as the department expenses, the 3.5% increase, can I go on to that?
Yeah, I, I think if there's any other further questions. Is everybody's? Yeah, is, is it reimbursable was the question?
Yes, we are, we are being reimbursed for, 49.0, I think it is. It's noted somewhere, but it's 49.8, 49.089% from, from Buckland. So we are not paying the full amount you see here. We are paying a little bit over half of that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on either police department salaries or police department expense? All right, thank you very much. All right, 291-5400, emergency management expense.
Good evening, Tom Wong, the emergency management director. I live at 7 Taylor Road here in town. I've been on this job a little, not quite four years now, and I'm just expanding the program and the, learning more about the duties and responsibilities of the emergency manager. I built an emergency operations center in one of the rooms at the, at the police station. That's fully operational, so they took some expense there. And we have an emergency operations center team working to, to operate in case of an emergency event. I also have developed a public information team to put out information at timely manner when needed. So all these programs that I'm expanding and initiating, they're, they're costing more and more each year. And as time goes on, just a foreword, but it might be a slight increase yearly for the next several years.
Any other discussion on line item emergency management expense?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Nargivitz.
No, I'm just, yes, Biagi.
I'm sorry, it's coming from over there, I know.
We all look the same, I guess.
I don't hear who's, you know, whatever.
I get it, it's okay. It's okay, I don't envy your position. I would just like to add that the emergency management expense has had to increase also because many of the nice brochures and informational pamphlets that you saw at Tom's table as you walked in tonight were previously provided for free by FEMA, and those are no longer being printed for the citizens of the United States. They provide PDFs that can be printed at our own expense. And Tom has gone to the, the jail print shop because they're very inexpensive, and he's figured out how he can get the same types of publication done there. And so that represents a big part of his expense also, so he can replace everything that FEMA used to provide for free.
Any other discussion on that line item? Okay, that finishes public safety. We'll move on to education, 310-5400.
Mr. Moderator, I believe you said we can take a break after an hour before we get into the school budget? Maybe that would be a good idea? Just a suggestion.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break then.
Thank you.
And, and we will start in exactly five minutes, so. All right, it's time to call back to order. Okay, we're down to the line item 310-5400, Mohawk Trail Regional School.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, great. My name is Willow Cohen. I live at 5 Sonic Avenue. I'm also one of your two school committee reps. So last year, we, Jake and I split this a little bit, and I'd like to do that again and share a brief, but I think a really important update on what is happening in the district, so that you have some context. The enrollment for the Mohawk Trail Regional School is up slightly from 313 to 322. BSE and the district overall has remained relatively flat. I want to give you some information about the academics that are happening. 75% of the Mohawk Trail students are taking advanced coursework, choosing from 10 AP courses. Because they're still testing, they're literally testing like this week, I want to give you stuff from last year. 38 students took 54 exams, 50%, 57% of our exam scores were in the 3 to 5 credit range, where they can get credit for college. Three students were named AP scholars. Three students were named AP scholars with honors. 70% of the Mohawk Trail graduates have moved on to a wide variety of colleges and universities. 20% are entering the workforce. 6% are entering the military. And one student has already earned their EMT license. The list of college acceptances is over two pages long. I won't list all the colleges, but I see it every week. It's amazing how many colleges they're getting into. There's also internship opportunities every year, just a few to mention. Davenport's, thank you, Davenport's, is, has internship opportunities. There's also opportunities within the history department, Smithsonian exhibit that's happening at the school, communications department, the Northern Berkshire ambulance, Franklin Land Trust, and UMass Amherst has a tick lab with a student there. Mohawk Trail has expanded their pathways for students interested in medicine, entrepreneurship, many other opportunities. These include dual enrollments with GCC. Students with Key Club continue to offer free clothing for the community through a caring and sharing closet. Middle school students are offered a career day every year, where people can come and talk about careers outside, obviously as they move through their education at Mohawk. And I was lucky to participate in a wide variety of options out there. They also had an opportunity with their state representatives and asked about their local community. There's an amazing Smithsonian exhibit happening right now in Mohawk Trail in the library, and we are the only school chosen for this exhibit. One of our, of Mohawk Trail seniors has the Franklin County Area Superintendent Certificate, or earned that for academic excellence. And this student also is a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. 10 students are the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners. So this is high NCAS doors, and it gives tuition credit for eight semesters at a mass state university. Students are finishing their capstone projects their senior year. Just a couple of examples, building a tractor, creating new music, building a ski buff business, painting portraits, many more. They're about to go into their final stage, and that includes public presentations. So people are actually invited to come and listen to all of these amazing capstones, which are a requirement for graduation. BSE students have a new literacy and phonetics curriculum. It's, I believe, in year three, and it's going quite well. They have a band program that's thriving. They have enhanced music. They adjusted Willy Wonka. A huge PTO with lots of fundraising, including the Oktoberfest, and a new playground that they're fundraising for. And there's lots of interaction between the middle school and the elementary school to continue to build that community, those bridges between. The sports are full at the district, and sixth graders are participating in the middle school and high school through programming. Over 50% of the students participate in sports. Volleyball, first time ever, Western Mass champs. Girls' alpine ski, state champs. Boys' and girls' alpine skiing, won their division through PVIAC. And a Mohawk senior won first place. Varsity wrestling D3 champs, first time since 2022. A senior won first and won actually over 100 matches over his career at Mohawk Trail, and two more wrestlers made the podium. The arts are thriving. There's arts, classes, exhibits, chorus, bands, plays, music. All sorts of things are happening every semester. All sorts of things are happening every semester. I would encourage people, uh, the school year's not over yet. May fifteenth, there's a district concert. May twenty-ninth, there's a Smithsonian celebration along with other exhibits that are happening at Mohawk Trail, and then senior awards night, and then the graduation is the next day, May thirtieth. From six to eight. Um, so that's my quick synopsis of what's happening. There's so much more. I do want to say one other thing very briefly, um, because you also know that we're working on sustainability for the future. And so I want to just give a brief report of where we're at at the moment. Um, I reported last year that we were working with the consulting group, uh, Burke Twelve to undertake a review of the, uh, both Mohawk Trail District and the Hallamont District. They've completed over sixteen months of work. All of this is located on the website for the Burke Twelve. Um, it's twodistrictseighttowns.org. You can always also ask me anything, ask us anything. We can give you information and resources. In April, the project steering committee voted to recommend that the Mohawk Trail District and the Hallamont, uh, District School Committee, uh, phase in an action plan that will ultimately result in a single, uh, pre-K to twelve campus at the Mohawk Trail, uh, campus, campus where Mohawk Trail currently, uh, resides. The action plan is located directly on that homepage of that website. Uh, the school committees are, uh, reviewing this information. They'll vote at the regular meetings. Next week, there's a lot more work to be done. This is the action plan, then there's a lot more conversation to have, and a lot of community meetings. Everyone is invited into this conversation. Um, even if everything goes perfectly, we still have at least five to seven years for anything to be implemented. And ultimately, it's up to our communities, up to our vote. And so I would just encourage everyone to please, um, participate, please ask questions, please, um, always feel that I'm a resource if you have any questions about that. Um, so, thank you. I really appreciate your time. I want to turn that over to Jason, um, who will talk about the numbers.
Jason Cusmano, thirty-seventh Anne X Street. Um, I'm the other school committee rep. I'm also a chair of the budget subcommittee, um, for the school committee. So I'll do the boring part and talk about the numbers. Um, just want to say that, um, there was a lot of work that went into this. Um, this starts back in October, um, right through February. We're working almost weekly on this. Um, there, uh, this budget as being, as presented, there's no new programs, um, no new positions added other than those needed for, um, special education. Um, so, you know, this, this, uh, slight increase is not, you know, due to having what programs. Um, kids are going to get the same, um, you know, uh, program, uh, you know, offerings that they have now. When we started this, um, we kind of, uh, knowing that we're, you know, basically staying level services, um, we kind of started there. So had we done nothing with the, you know, contractual increases and things like health insurance and Medicare and, you know, um, workers' comp and the, uh, special education, you know, needs that we have, um, the budget would have gone up one point eight million dollars had we done nothing. So that's where this started. Then through multiple meetings, um, going back to administration and our business administrator, um, you know, working on it and trimmed lots of different things, and, and cut out about eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand out of that, um, one point eight million, um, which is the number we're at now. So the numbers are, what we call our all-funds budget, which includes what it costs to run the school, um, is twenty-seven million, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, uh, six-hundred-and-one dollars. That's a four-point, uh, zero-one percent increase, um, over last year's budget. Um, when we apply the offsets and grants and use of, uh, revolving accounts that we have, um, we bring the, what we call the local budget down to twenty-two million, two-thirteen, two-eighty-eight, which is a three-point-six-one percent increase over last year. After we apply the revenues we get from various entities, um, you know, state and such, the oper- the total operating assessment is fourteen million, three-ninety-one, eight-ninety-eight, or a two-point-eight-nine percent increase. That's the number we really have the most control over. After we've done all the work, we are at a two-point-eight-nine percent increase that goes out to the towns. It's divided, um, based on a regional agreement, and Shelburne's portion is the two-million-nine-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand, three-ninety-five, or a three percent increase over last year.
Is there any other discussion on this line item? Yes. Like I said, these, if you know you're going to speak to the article, please approach the microphone early so that we limit the time that's lost.
Sorry, Will, and I didn't know until the last information came out. Uh, Mary Luegell, two-oh-three Shelburne Center Road. Um, I'm concerned, this will come up later, about the playground funding, and I'd like to know how much the school is putting in for funding the repairs that are needed at the playground right now, because I understand that there were six children with broken bones in the last year, and it's my understanding that no maintenance money is being put into it. And I'd like to know if that's true. Uh, my other question is, if you have eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars excess that you can use to offset the upcoming budget, why was there so much excess from the previous year?
Okay, you may answer that.
Um, I'll speak to the eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand number. Um, so what I was saying is we had one point eight million, almost one point nine million had we done nothing. The eight-hundred-and-fifty-one was, um, the amount of money that, in the work that was done, that was trimmed down. I can quickly go through that, um, you know, uh, no, I can't. I can tell you what the one point eight is off the top of my head. Uh, the big increases were a hundred-and-twelve thousand in transportation, seven-hundred-and-nineteen thousand in contractual salary increases, three-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand in health insurance, which went up ten percent, fifteen thousand in retirement benefits, forty-five thousand workers' comp, and five-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand in, uh, special education, uh, mostly due to out-of-district placements and transportation. So that's how we got to the one point nine, uh, million-dollar increase. I can flip to what the eight-fifty-one encompasses is. So they knew we weren't happy with the numbers as they came out. Um, and these are the, how, how the money was trimmed. There was nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand trimmed out of administration, out of instruction, um, teacher salaries, stipends, and supplies. There was five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand. Uh, a lot of that was due to open positions that we budgeted for that weren't filled, um, and we chose to take them right out and not try to fill them, um, as well as retirements and attrition. There was nobody specifically laid off for this. Uh, student services, they trimmed fifty-six thousand out of nurse salaries, athletics, and transportation. Maintenance and operation was trimmed by fifty-four thousand. Benefits and HR trimmed by seven thousand, and school choice and ongoing tuition trimmed by two-hundred thousand. There's a very detailed line item on our full budget book, where you can see where every seventy-four dollars was saved, and how all of these things, how we get to the eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand. So these are broad numbers, um, but, you know, if you want to, you can dive into the, you know, fifteen, you know, hundred-page, you know, line items, um, and then see, uh, Bill has really made it very transparent. There's tabs for every, there's a reductions list tab that has every single item that was trimmed. Some of it is saving a little bit on corporate copier maintenance or supplies, you know, paper, things like that. Um, so they did a ton of work to, to get these savings to, when we speak to the, um, I don't have an answer for the, um, for the maintenance of the, of the playgrounds. Um, if you know, I mean. Bill is our assistant superintendent and, uh, of business and finance. Basically, our business administrator, if you have an answer to the playground.
Could you answer that playground question? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Identify yourself, please.
Bill Latoy, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance for Mohawk Trail Regional School District. Um, so normal maintenance is being done on the playground. The money that they are raising is to replace equipment and to move forward with that. So, you know, if there's something that needs to be done, we're doing that. And, and, you know, our maintenance director, Robin Pease, is on top of everything in our district, and she saves so much money for our district. So we're not ignoring anything that, that's broken or, you know, that we can repair, but the, the fundraising that's going on right now is to actually replace the whole playground. And the district doesn't have that into their budget. Um, if we were to put that into the budget, that would have increased the budget by almost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or something like that. And we, we know that our communities can't, can't afford that, so that's why they're doing the fundraising.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on the line item, Mohawk Trail Regional School? Ms. Walsh.
I'm just not sure how to make an amendment. I propose that we move four thousand dollars from the Mohawk Trail budget and put it into the Shelburne, uh, the Arms Library budget.
Mr. Moderator? Um, hold on, uh, is there any second on that? I hear none. So, mister? Okay, we have motion on the floor to modify the, uh, Mohawk Trail Regional School budget and a second budget, um, so.
Can I speak?
You need to stand up and say that.
You may speak to it, yes.
Okay. Just, uh, for me, it's a math thing that this would increase their budget by whatever, ten percent, seven point eight, back to what they asked for. It would lower the Mohawk budget by, again, with math in my head, point three percent.
Okay, and the, uh, the amount you moved was reducing it by four thousand?
I rounded it out four thousand.
Okay.
That's the difference between, uh, what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, mister.
Mr. Moderator.
Mister Judd.
Point of order. Mr. Moderator, uh, Jackie, uh, would you mind putting your motion in writing while you could go see Penny or Sue Bishop right over there and put that motion in writing and return it? They'll return it to the moderator. Oh, they have, yes, they have, they have.
Thank you. All right. Well. While she's doing that, I, is this, uh, addressing the proposed amendment?
Yeah, um, just, just so we know the reality of what amendment would mean, it would basically be a no vote to the entire budget. We can't vote a different amount in one town, so Shelburne would essentially have a no vote to this budget if you choose to accept this amendment.
All right.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Biagi.
Almost got it this time. It's like notorious B.I.G. You'll never forget it now, right? Uh, I, I just wanted to understand if, uh, someone could explain what the implications are if one town votes down the school budget, what happens next?
All right, please answer that.
So the way the regional agreement is written, um, it's a little complex. Um, every town, we have eight towns in our district, but two of them don't send, uh, they're Hallamont towns. Charlemont and Holly don't send, um, their kids to one of our schools. So every town, like Shelburne, gets two votes basically towards the budget or units. Um, Charlemont and Holly would get, um, would get, uh, one vote, uh, towards the budget. Um, what we need is ten units to pass the budget. So we already have, um, we have eight of those ten units already, um, because Ashfield, I'm not going to get them all, Buckland, Plainfield, Colrain have all had their town meetings and unanimously passed the budget, not unanimously, sorry, overwhelmingly passed the budget. Um, so we have eight of the ten units already. Um, we have the remaining, um, four towns, um, to vote. Um, so a no vote in Shelburne doesn't mean the budget doesn't pass. It doesn't mean you pay four thousand dollars less. Um, if it does get the other two necessary units, either a vote from Charlemont and Holly or one from the remaining towns I'm not coming up with quickly, um, Heath and, what? Anyway, um, if it gets the vote, you'll be required to pay the full amount in the end anyway. Um, so if we get the remaining two units that we need out of those four towns, you'd be required to pay that other amount, and then you'd have a deficit in your budget because you would have appropriated the money to the, to the library. So that's the reality of it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Oh, okay, all right. Ms. Ferentz, and then this gentleman here.
Uh, Penny Ferentz, one-eight-seven South Shelburne Road. This is a question, I guess it's a procedural question. Can town meeting increase a line item from the floor? That can be done.
I will ask our town council if she would address that?
Yes, legally, town, town meeting may increase a line item from the floor, but it can only be increased so much. Um, basically, what the law is, is that the warrant has to fairly warn about how much money's going to be spent on each article. And so, you know, a certain percentage, like ten percent, maybe even twenty percent increase would be okay. A fifty percent increase, seventy-five percent increase, maybe not. That's the moderator's call, so that's the law.
All right, and this gentleman here.
Uh, Hugh Knox, two-fifteen Old Green, North Road. And I'm, I'm just hoping that Ms. Walsh, while she was listening over there, might have heard some of the discussion and the impact that, you know, voting this motion would have had. Okay.
Put the mic close to your mouth, really close.
Thank you. I would like to think that Ms. Walsh, having heard the information and considering the impact that it would have on the school budget, she might like to consider withdrawing her motion.
All right, um, you have?
Thank you.
Okay.
Susan Ivy Nichols, eleven Maple Street. Um, I would like to ask the finance committee their position on the school budget. I do see on an actual paper that they have, um, generated for us that they recommend voting no for the school budget.
Would the finance committee like to? Yes, we're discussing the amendment. Oh, yeah, yes, we're discussing the amendment right now to remove the four thousand from the.
Yes, I have a procedural question. Is, are, is town meeting allowed to move money from one line item, like the school budget, into another line item?
Well, actually, they could, right, it might need to be a second motion to, uh, raise the other line item. Right now, we need to look at decreasing this line item by four thousand according to the motion made.
Mr. Moderator.
Mister Burnham.
Jim Burnham, sixty-four Little Mohawk Road, on the finance committee. Uh, I believe the overall motion here is the total amount of the omnibus budget. Moving funds from one line item to another does not increase the total amount of the omnibus budget. So the overall motion. So, the overall motion is the article, the dollar number at the bottom will remain the same. So, it's not really increasing the, the amount being voted.
Yes.
But if the Mohawk budget does pass for any other towns, then you'll be required to find that four thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any further discussion on this line item, on this, uh, motion to amend?
I gave you two motions, so I would like us to consider my second motion, which is to just plainly increase the Arms Library budget.
We can do that when we get down to that line item. Right now, we're on the line item of the Mohawk Trail Regional School District and discussing whether, and the motion to decrease the amount by four thousand dollars.
So, if we move on without discussing that, we can't discuss the more complicated amendment when we get to the library? We can, but then that would mean we're discussing lowering the school budget while we're discussing the library.
Yes, but they're two separate items.
I understand.
School budget is one item, and that's where we're at right now. We will discuss the Arms Library when we get to it down a little...
But I can't propose at that point lowering the school budget. We'd have to do it now.
Correct.
Okay, I would like to discuss that then.
Discuss, decreasing the school budget?
Yes, by four thousand.
You've already, yes, that's what we've been, and you've already discussed, you've already spoken to that.
Okay.
Let me ask if anybody else has, has anything to say on that motion to amend? And it has to deal with decreasing the amount? Okay, I will recognize the...
So, Bill Latoy again. I just want to clarify for the motion what the budget number is and, and just remind people that how would the eight towns that get calculated into that, as Jason explained, and that you can go online and you can see the assessment pages and you can see each town's piece of that assessment and how we can't move, you know, money. You can't just decrease, you know, Shelburne's piece of that without involving, you know, the rest of the budget. So, as we said, you know, just important, and I invite everybody to look at our, our page and look at the budget and, you know, look at all of the pages of it so you can understand where all that is. There's tabs on there that show payroll, there's tabs on there that show all of the expenses in detail. So, we've worked really hard over the last three years to make this as transparent as we can. And to come in with a three percent increase, um, when the rest of your towns are facing that, you know, we're proud to present that to you. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any new information to present?
I have, I have one.
Mr. Baker.
Wait a minute. I think this has been a helpful education on which line items to raise or lower. And the school budget is probably not the one to be transferring money from because it's an eight-town regional agreement. So, I recommend a no vote on this amendment.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Faith Williams, 120 Franklin Williams Road, Sheldon Center. My question is, would you treat the amendment as written?
Um, I move to amend the motion as follows, to lower the, the, the final proposal, Mohawk Trail Regional School budget by four thousand dollars and raise the final proposed Arms Library budget by four thousand dollars. We, it's out of order, the second part of the motion is out of order right now. So, we're only going to be voting on the first half of that motion.
Mr. Moderator, before we vote, a point of order.
There was a second earlier, I believe.
There was a second to that motion. That was, uh, Suzette, uh, I'm sorry, you can't remember your last ... Yes.
Donna, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but for years, we've worked under the impression that you cannot raise dollars. For years, we've worked under the, under the understanding that you cannot raise line items at town meeting, at annual town meeting. I believe that's changed over the past few years. And could you just give a brief explanation if I'm right or wrong about that or if it's always been that way?
Well, right now, the motion isn't to raise any line item, it's to lower a line item.
Mr. Moderator, I realize that, but we have talked about raising a line item on the warrant, well, on the warrant. I'd like to have just Donna explain why and how that could be done.
We're gonna need that explanation anyway, so go ahead. Because later on, it's gonna be relevant. Yes. Now, it's fine.
In nineteen thirty-something, in nineteen thirty-something, one of the towns out on the west, on the east coast basically tried to raise a dock item appropriation from fifty dollars to five hundred dollars. And the Attorney General's Office wrote a general opinion saying you can't raise appropriations on town meeting floor. But since that time, that really wasn't the correct interpretation of the law. It was certainly the correct interpretation of that specific act because the voters just weren't fairly warned that they were gonna be spending five hundred dollars, which is a great deal of money back then, obviously, on a dock. But there's no law that says you cannot raise an appropriation, increase an appropriation on town meeting floor. It basically is up to the moderator to call whether or not he believes the citizens have been fairly warned about the amount of money that will be spent on any article or any line in the budget. So, basically, we try and use the rule of thumb, ten, twenty percent, as sort of keeping it within the bounds of being fairly warned. But it's absolutely up to the moderator to make that call. But it is not illegal to raise an appropriation amount on town meeting floor.
All right, all right. Any other new information on the motion to amend? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to amend the line item, uh, Mohawk Trail Regional School District, uh, by lowering it by four thousand dollars, please, uh, vote. Proceed to vote with your yes votes first. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is defeated. All right. Now, we're back to discussing that line item. If there's any other further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next line item.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Yes, um, I'd like to hear the Finance Committee's opinion about the line item Mohawk Trail Regional School, please.
Okay, will somebody from the Finance Committee please address that question?
Uh, Todd Dugreal, um, Chair of Finance Committee, 510 LeMond Road. So, we, so we in our report recommended a no vote on this line item. As you can see, different reasons there. It is a three percent increase this year, which really isn't all that bad. But if you go back to the things we've, we've tried to explain from our opinion in the last five to six years, um, we thought that there was room to trim five, six years ago. So, every year, it just kept getting newer. And we're starting to run to, this year, it's fifty percent. It's between fifty and fifty percent of our budget. And one of the reasons that it's fifty percent this year is due to the reason that we did wage classifications for the other departments. So, that brought it up. So, it's fifty, but overall, um, it's, in our opinion, that there could be more that could be trimmed from that budget. Um, but ultimately, it's up to you, the voters, to make your decision.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. Guzman, are you answering that question?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna speak to the Finance Committee's recommendation. Um, I think it's really disappointing that our Finance Committee asked us zero questions about the budget and then they did a no vote. We had a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and they chose to ask us no questions. So, I, I don't understand. I understand the concern. I mean, the, the raising budget is a concern. They say that, you know, due to, you know, dramatically, I forget how they worded it in their thing, reduced enrollment in the last several years, we went down two students this year. So, in the entire district, we went from eight hundred and sixteen students last October one, is the date you knew for destiny. This, this October one, we were eight hundred and fourteen students. So, I gotta say, I'm very disappointed in our Finance Committee.
Thank you. I will allow the Finance Committee to, if they want to say anything, but this, this has gotta be the end of this discussion. Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll move on to line item 3205417, Franklin County Tech School. Mr. Miller. Get really close to the mic, please.
Bob Miller, 10 Grove Street, in Shelburne, Rep. to Tech and School Committee. Recommend that we accept the budget as requested. There's been a lot of costs that are beyond anyone's control that we've heard from Mohawk Trail, costing, insurances, retirement, the whole business. But at Tech, we have some other interesting new programs that are amazing for what we get. There's a freestanding veterinarian science building. There is a terminal program in medical assisting. So, you get out of high school and sit for an exam that the next day you can walk into a doctor's office for a paying job. Prior to that, you'd have to attend community college for that. We have a new developing aviation technician repair program. And I can just picture everybody going down to Barnes and working. And it's just, it's an amazing place, and you're getting a lot, a lot for your money. So, I'm just saying my position representing Shelburne is you should vote for it.
Yes, Mr. Baker.
Just to add a little piece of information there, my understanding is that seventeen thousand dollar increase represents two more students from Shelburne going to tech school. Am I right about that?
Uh, it'll be more than that. Um, this, that...
No, I mean, two more than last year.
It'll be more than that.
Oh.
This year, the, the, uh, we had eleven students from Shelburne. Next year was six entering and only two leaving, graduating. We'll have our full quarter of fifteen. So, it's looking really good.
All right. Any, any other discussion on that line item, Franklin County Technical School? Hearing none, uh, well, we can proceed down to, uh, Highway Grant Writing Administration under Highways, 4225360.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Baker.
That represents a fairly small increase in the grant writer who has brought in two million dollars to the town in the last couple of years.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, I guess not. All right, we'll move on to line item 4225400, Highway Maintenance.
Uh, is Jeff Johnston, our superintendent, is he here tonight? Okay. Um, I don't know if Jeff needs to speak to this, but if he wants to add more detail, my understanding is there are a couple of, uh, reasons for this increase in amount. One is just purchase of, of clean materials, which we have not done in the past, but we've discovered a substantial amount of knotweed in the process of renovating Old Greenfield Road. And that had to do with contaminated fill being, uh, placed on those embankments, unfortunately. And we're going through some major efforts to correct that now. And, uh, so going forward, the, the Highway Department is purchasing a lot of clean gravel and other kinds of fill, uh, to, uh, to address its, you know, bank stabilization efforts and things like that. Uh, there's also been some upgrade in the tooling in the, in the garage shop. We, we are very fortunate to have a, uh, a very talented highway laborer on our crew who can do a lot of repairs in-house, but we have a lot of very old tooling there that our superintendent is upgrading. Those are two of the, the areas that account for that request for increase. If I've missed things, Jeff can add to the list there if he wants to.
Is there any further discussion on this, on line item, uh, Highway Maintenance? Well, then we'll proceed down to Recreation. Item 6305428, Recreation.
Mr. Moderator. Uh, the three thousand dollar increase in this budget is, uh, the addition of an expense line item to allow the programs that operate at the Cowell Gymnasium to buy supplies, basketballs, volleyballs, tennis balls, whatever they need.
Okay, any other discussion? And we'll proceed on to 6305427, Cowell Gym Maintenance. All right, then we'll move on to 6925434, Bridge of Flowers. Yes.
Reverend Dr. Van Jones, Major. Just, uh, what is, why is this number so low? Given that the Bridge of Flowers is such an amazing resource in the town.
That is a good question.
This represents Shelburne's share of the electricity costs on the bridge. The women's club handles the rest of the expense.
All right, any other questions on that line item? All right, then we'll move down to Human Services, line item 5415400, West County Senior Service District. Nothing? Sorry. Yes.
Suzanne Addy Nichols, 11 Maple Street. So, why the increase, twenty-six percent?
Can't hear you.
Why the increase for the twenty-six percent on the West County Senior Services District?
Oh, and she asked, why is there an increase of twenty-six percent on the, on that line item?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to recognize Julie Moreno, the Director of the Senior Center.
Julie Moreno, will you please address that question?
Hello, Julie Moreno, um, Director of the Senior Center and West County Senior Service District. When I started in 2022, one month later, all three towns of the consortium, Ashfield, Buckland, Shelburne, voted in to become a district. What the district could do was encompass all nine towns. So, all nine towns could contribute to not just the Senior Center, sorry. It's been a long day. But also to try and pick up some of the services in the coming years that we know we may not be able to count on. So, the Senior Service District that everyone voted in was to really supply the same services for seniors to more towns in the community. The idea was to pool our resources and to be able to accomplish things that we haven't been able to. So, the idea behind this was a good idea. The Board of Managers have met and they're volunteers, and the governor signed up on this. So, the district basically will continue on with what we're doing, but instead of the town of Shelburne being our fiscal agent, we had to outsource. So, the cost that you've seen in the increase of our accountants, for software for the accountants, for legal services, for everything that we've had to duplicate when all three towns weren't able to be our fiscal agent. So, what we're trying to do now is to provide the same services, but encompass more, get more counties. So, the increase that you're seeing directly reflects the district trying to absorb all the costs as a fiscal agenda, if that makes sense. So the increase that you're seeing directly reflects the district trying to absorb all the costs as a fiscal agenda, if that makes sense.
Any other discussion on this line item?
I'd like to speak.
Yes, Ms. Sperans.
Penny Sperans, one eighty-seven South Shelburne Road. I'm also the Chair of the Shelburne Council on Aging, and I just want to clarify what Julie said. Right now, the Senior Services District is just the three towns of Asheville, Buckland, and Shelburne, who had made the consortium that supported the Senior Center up till now. But we found out that we could not do anything if we ever needed any kind of capital expense or anything like that to, we couldn't do it as, as a consortium. So the towns voted in Senior Services District three years ago. The Select Boards appointed two members from each of the three towns to be on the Board of Managers, and they have been developing their bylaws and such to be fully operational as of July one. And as Julie said, the Town of Shelburne had been the fiscal agent for the Senior Center, but the town declined to continue to be the fiscal agent for the new Senior Services District. So the Senior Services District has had to hire an outside agent to, to handle all the finances for that. But Angel mentioned earlier that the town will be reimbursed the part of the budget that included the Senior Center in fiscal years. So it, it goes back. But right now, the Senior Services District only comprises the three towns. There's a possibility in the future that other towns may want to join, and there's language in the legislation that allows that to happen. But that's not in the cards at this moment.
Any other discussion? You have another question, or?
Suzanne Addy Nichols, eleven Maple Street. Suzanne Addy Nichols, eleven Maple Street. Okay. Why did the Town of Shelburne decline to support the West County Services District?
Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
In order for the town to be the fiscal agent of the West County Senior District, we'd have had to have had separate software, separate, everything would have had to been separate because they're no longer a town department. And we couldn't lend the current resources we have to take on the district.
All right, any other discussion on this line item? All right, if there's no objections?
Just really wanted to clarify, sorry. As Penny said, I just want to remind everyone that as we go forward, nothing really will change with the services we do offer. And Shelburne is one of the very few places that is very unique that we have outreach coordinators that have helped many of you here with food insecurity, with housing issues, with child, with, so it's not just recreation. We're trying to be a resource center as things change. And as life paths or senior access point may lose funding, we're really trying to pick that up. And that's why we're so passionate about this choice. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Harry Nutt, we'll proceed to the next line item. First of all, I'm gonna ask our town administrator if there is an admission to the line item number? Or is this just a blank number?
This is a new account this year, and the accountant did not assign an account number, but it will be assigned after town meeting.
Okay, so five four one blank, Council on Aging. Any discussion on this? Then, you have, okay.
I'd just like to give a brief explanation again. This is Penny Sperans, one eighty-seven South Shelburne Road, Chair of the Council on Aging. For many years, the councils on aging of Asheville, Shelburne, and Buckland have collaborated with the Senior Center, but also with each other to provide events for seniors in our three towns of some informational, some entertainment. We've had, I'm sure some of you have heard and attended our conversation cafes where we'll have soup and bread and some desserts and such. And over the years, all that food has been paid for by the Council on Aging members. I mean, we have, we have put a lot of resources into that. And the Town of Asheville Council on Aging, for many years, has had a small line item in their budget for couns, specifically for Council on Aging events. And Buckland has added that also, and so we're a little late to the game here, but we are requesting the one thousand dollars to just help defray the expenses that we have for the special events that our councils on aging specifically collaborate on and provide for our seniors in the three towns. That's what that's for.
Any further discussion on that line item? Then we'll move on to line item six one, okay, six one zero five four two four, Shelburne Free Public Library. It was. All right, if nobody wants to speak to it, that's fine.
Annie Need, fourteen High Street. I just have a question. My understanding, and tell me if I've got this wrong, but my understanding is the Shelburne Free Public Library is smaller than the Arms Library, so I don't understand why the budget is so close.
Could you wait and answer that, Mr. Baker?
All right, the Arms, Arms Library is, is a three-part budget that two parts of it are Shelburne and Buckland, and the third part is the Arms Library Association.
All right, any other discussion on that line item? Then we'll move on to line item six one zero five four two five, Arms Library.
I'm Tom Johnson, excuse me, one nineteen Bridge Street. I'd like to make a motion that the budget be increased to forty-one thousand five hundred thirteen dollars.
Okay. Who seconded that?
John Walls, Main Street.
John Walls, seconded? Mr. Moderator. What is, what is the amount you're increasing to?
As was requested by the library, forty-one thousand five hundred thirteen dollars.
Okay, it's been made, seconded?
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Judd.
Tom, are you moving over toward Penny and she's interested? Oh, yeah, okay, very good.
Yes. Okay. All right, we can enter a discussion on this motion? Yes.
Hi, I'm Breann Dennis, I live at five Maple Street.
What's your name?
Breann Dennis.
Breann, okay.
And I recently became the Chair of the Arms Board of Trustees. So I wanna support the motion, which I'm very grateful for, and also to share a little bit of context about what's important about the budget right now. So after we were notified about the cuts, we let representatives from the town know that, um, sorry, that both Shelburne libraries would be decertified with the original budget recommendation with the state because the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners has a minimum annual municipal appropriation requirement in order for libraries to be certified and supported by the state. And we're very grateful that they were willing to work with us to prevent decertification, and they asked for what the minimum contribution would be in order to maintain certification. And, who has spoken publicly in a while, sorry. Because we only had twenty-four hours to provide this figure, we were not able to verify it with the Board of Library Commissioners. And unfortunately, our recommended adjustment was still low. We made a mistake. And so we do, in order to remain, for both town libraries to remain certified, we do need to see an increase of at least one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, which this amendment would provide. Um, and, yeah. We've been in touch with the Board of Library Commissioners, and they've acknowledged that our situation here in the village, where there are two towns who use the library, is complicated. But the reality is that Buckland is not legally obligated to contribute to our operating budget from a certification standpoint. So, I, yeah, I support the motion.
Do we have any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Baker.
I, I'd just like to offer the context in which both the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommended reducing this budget. And I don't think, I think I can speak fairly to say that neither board is anti-library. And that the reason that we made that recommendation, and, and we're sorry that we got into the whole decertification kerfuffle because that was not our intention. Our, our response was really a request, which we've been making to the library for several years, to convene with Buckland and come up with a fair and equitable way to share the costs of the library, which we felt our, our concerns have not been addressed. And so this was our way of signaling to the library that we wanted them to address that concern in this coming year, which we still hope that they will. The library is one of about six services, as, as has been noted, that we share with the Town of Buckland. And as we regionalize more and more in that way, it's important to us that we do that in a fair and equitable fashion. So you'll be hearing those words from me tonight in a couple of different places. But that's, that's the context for this, and so I'm not, I'm not recommending a, a, a no vote on this amendment, but I am recommending that the library take that action because Buckland, to be honest here, unilaterally reduced its share of the budget several years ago with no by-your-leave or, or consultation with Shelburne. And that's what we're trying to address.
Any further discussion? Yes.
Tom.
Tom Hale, two thirty Chale Road.
And I, trustee of the Shelburne Center Library, the Shelburne Free Public Library, and I would just encourage you to vote yes on this motion because, as you've heard, if you vote no on it, it's gonna penalize the libraries, decertify them, which has lots of implications that I won't go into. But I would just hope that you would support the local libraries. I did some awful math this afternoon, and of these fifty line items on this page, the average increase was twelve percent. And it doesn't seem fair to me that the libraries should suffer a nearly eight percent decrease. The only other thing that has a worse decrease was the longevity pay line item. So I would just implore you to support the libraries and vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Emily Baron, twenty-seven High Street. I would actually like to hear what decertification entails because it is a major loss of services to our community. I want to make sure you're all aware of what that is. In case any of you are thinking of voting no, I'd like to make sure that you know what that means. And I'd like to point out that our budget reflects our values as a community. And by lowering the budget to our library, that reflects a value that I hope none of you support. I hope you'll support this motion.
Is there anybody that can address the, okay, Ms. Wheeler?
I was trying to avoid this this year.
Get close to the mic, please.
Okay, this is Lori Wheeler, seventy-one A Main Street.
This close.
Director, Director of Arms Library. And to address exactly what decertification means is that not only would the two libraries lose state aid, they would lose grant money for the two separate CWMR programs, and that's about a thousand dollars per library. And the big part of this is that both libraries would lose decertification, and that means that neither library, anyone who holds a Shelburne or Arms Library library card, would be able to borrow from another library. So that's what is involved with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this? Yes.
Hi, everybody. Wick Sanford, fifty-nine Maple Street in Shelburne. So actually, Shelburne Falls. I was one of eight ladies, basically, who raised the money to put the roof back on the library when hurricane Irene came through. And one of the things the group felt strongly about is that the library means, it, it is the heart of our community in that we all use it, we all share its books, and we should support it in any way we can. I also have served on the Greater Shelburne Falls Area Business Association. And when the towns, both towns, reduced funding for GSSFBA, we basically had to shut our doors because we didn't have enough money to weather the COVID crisis. Uh, long story short, these entities and these buildings, in the case of the Arms Library, are our character, are our heart of the community. Without them, we have less economic development because people don't come to town to buy, uh, we get books and we go for lunch and meet up with friends and so forth. And it's time that, I agree with Andrew, it's ti, it's time now for both towns to recognize that. What each town decides to spend on its facilities is really up to that. And it's not up to the library, uh, it's not up to you, Lori, to beg, borrow, and steal from either town. It's our responsibility to support the library, period, and to give the full amount that has been amended. Yeah, for the protocols, so.
All right, is there any?
Mr. Moderator. I have one, a question somewhat related to this. If we vote on not amended and it's accepted, do we then need an amendment to change the overall amount of the budget?
The, there is a motion on the floor, the main motion is on approving the budget. And then we will, if this amount gets amended, it amends the bottom line of the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would like to comment on this. I would like to say that during the discussions of the budget, when we were talking about the library budgets, the issue of decertification was never made apparent. I want that to be perfectly clear. I also want to state very clearly to everyone, libraries are a fundamental part of any community's social infrastructure. Social infrastructure is very important to the resilience of the community, to the sense of the community, to how we believe in ourselves and what we think about each other. Libraries are very, very important. I also have a question, having said all that. There, the amendment, I believe, Mr. Moderator, if you could confirm, is to increase the line item of the budget back to the original request of forty-one thousand five hundred and thirteen?
That is correct.
That's a difference of, if I, my calculator trustee here is four thousand one hundred and eighty-five increase. There was a previous speaker who said there was some math that was incorrect, and there needed to be one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And I'm not sure what that is or where that takes us, or if- needed to be $1,333, and I'm not sure what that is or where that takes us, or if that's part of this $4,000 increase. Thank you.
Hi, Rhianne Dennis, 5 Maple Street.
You may answer that question.
Okay, yes. That 1,300 would be, the 4,000 is sufficient, because it is above the necessary threshold, if that makes sense. So we would need at least, right now, the recommendation is 37,328. In order for certification, we would need an additional 1,300 at 38,000. And so 41,000 would be well over that threshold.
Forty, you mean 4,100? Oh, the 41,513 is over the threshold, but the minimum you need to reach the threshold to prevent decertification is 1,333. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Go ahead. Wait, first of all, is there anybody else who wants to speak that hasn't spoken yet? All right, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that...
State your name again, please.
Emily Baron, 27 High Street. That this year's request is actually only $1,013 increase from last year. So the amount that's being discussed now would still be a reduction from last year, which I'd like to point out, still reflects a value in this community. If it's one of the only things where a budget is being reduced and everything else is being raised, that still says something. So I don't, I don't know if this is, the amendment was to meet the request of 41,513, but what was just being discussed was saying, suggesting we don't actually need that much to meet certification. So I don't know if that is looking at altering the amendment or something, but...
No, that was just a point of clarification for me. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to amend? Hold up your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to motion to amend? Hold up your no cards. Motion is approved. We have an extension. That's okay. All right. At this time, I'm going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and vote on the budget. I now call us back to order. We have a motion on the floor. The main motion, Beck, is to see if the town will vote to appropriate sums of money as amended for the purposes listed, beginning with moderator's salary and ending with Memorial Day totaling $6,250,120, and to raise the required amounts as further described in the warrant, or as amended, or take any other action relative thereto. So move. We have, uh... I second. Okay, Mr. Baker. Well, this is already on the floor, so we don't need a move. It's already been moved earlier. Right now, we need, any further discussion? We already amended it. So right now, we are going to, any further discussion on the motion to approve the amended total of the Omtimus budget? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor? Raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed? Raise your no cards. Motion is approved. Nine... All right. We'll move on to Article 8. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $52,945 to fund the Mohawk Trail Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2026, transfer $500 from the Quintus Allen Trust Fund, and raise the appropriate $52,445 as further described in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so move.
All right, Mr. Cusimano moves. Do we have a second? And Willow, Willow Cohen, second. Okay, Mr. Cusimano, do you want to address the motion?
Just quickly, this is payments on current capital projects that have already been done. So this is just a portion of projects that were approved a while ago. This is just the payment on capital projects that have been already completed, and this is Shelburne's portion of those capital projects that we've done a while ago.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Okay, they support the article. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. Motion is approved. Okay, Article 9. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $6,270 from the stabilization account for Shelburne's share of the new water heater at the Mohawk Trail Regional High School, as further discussed in the warrant, or are described in the warrant, or take any other action thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so move.
Okay, Mr. Cusimano, Jason moved. And Willow second. Okay, would Jason like to address this?
Yes, this is actually, this is partially a recommendation from the Finance Committee a few years ago, that we define and then have a process on how to deal with capital projects. So we spent some time and came up with definitions that you can find on the Mohawk Trail website, on the business services page, in the FAQ section. It describes how we define capital projects. And then what this is more specifically is emergency capital projects that happen mid-year that we can't vote on for next year. Is the water heater goes, you need to replace it. It was estimated at a $25,000 water heater. It was replaced in the fall. And based on the procedure that we came up with, our business administrator sent out an email to the school committee and all the town administrators, alerting them of the project. In the past, this would have come out of the operating budget and not been allotted appropriately. So if something large was to happen at Buckland-Shelburne here, and we had to replace a water heater here, in the past, we would have scrambled and taken it out of the operating budget, and it never would have made it to a capital request. And then in theory, the other towns, the other six towns that don't have an interest in this school, would pay a portion of it, because it was operating and not capital. So this is our first attempt at trying to make all the capital stuff much more clear. And it fully meets the definition. The general guidelines of the definition were anything over $10,000, you know, to do with the building and the equipment, not maintenance items, but replacements. And I believe the line, I don't have it in front of me, is, you know, an extraordinary repair to a mechanical item. And this fully meets that definition.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Mr. Burnham?
Tim Burnham, 64 Old Mohawk Road. Finance Committee recommends a no vote on this article. There are several reasons we recommend this no vote. Number one, the primary reason, is that the capital expenditure is defined in the regional agreement of which the Regional School District operates. This definition can only be changed by a vote of all eight member towns. It cannot be changed by writing a procedure that says anything over $10,000 is a capital item. If we change the, excuse me, the change to the regional agreement, the language was in the change that was proposed last year that failed. Now, the change has been made by writing a procedure. Last year, we were also being asked to change the regional agreement about the way we count students to build the towers. Why would we just write a procedure to change the way we do that also? If we don't stand up for our regional agreement, it's not worth the paper it's written on. Number two, this is hardly an extraordinary maintenance expense. We've got a $27 million budget. A $25,000 replacement water heater is not an extraordinary expense. We were at a roofing project, asbestos removal, something like that, those are extraordinary expenses. As Mr. Cusimano explained, the water heater has been replaced this past fall. The bill has been paid. There's ample funds in their discretionary budgets to pay them $25,000 bill. This is why the Finance Committee recommends a no vote on this item.
Any further discussion on the, on the motion?
Yes, Jason Cusimano again. So the, the way the regional agreement is written, this definition fits perfectly. All we did in our meeting was try and define it a little more. It's always been in general terms, somewhere around $10,000. And when you look at the definitions, I literally went through 50 different towns and municipalities in this state to prepare for that meeting. Shelburne's recommend, Shelburne's definition of a capital project is something over $2,000. All the towns ranged anywhere from Shelburne's low of $2,000 up to about $25,000 as a minimum number for a capital project. So by any definition, you know, this $25,000, any, any town in the state of those 50 I looked at would qualify this as a capital project. The way it's written in the agreement is remodeling and making extraordinary repairs to a school building or buildings. Extraordinary means servicing, repairing, or reconditioning of school buildings, grounds, or equipment, which is outside the scope of regular maintenance. A water heater goes, you need kids to come to school. You can't wash the dishes in the cafeteria without a water heater. It's a $25,000 project. All we did in our meeting was try and put a number to it and give a few more definitions so that it, mostly because Shelburne was concerned with the definition of capital. So...
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion? Please show your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed? Show your no cards. Okay, put down your cards. I am unsure of how this is going, and also I am told that because it's money coming out of the stabilization, stabilization account, it needs to be a two-thirds vote. So we will proceed to count the votes. So are the counters ready? Approach the mic if you want.
I need some help from Select Board.
But we're already at, we're already at the vote.
Okay, so...
So...
Are we past that point?
Yeah, I think it's too late to amend it, because we are at the point of voting. So, all right, are the counters ready? All right. All, and all who vote, are in support of the motion, please raise your yes cards. Do not lower them until you know you've been counted.
This row can put their cards down. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Make sure you don't remove your cards until you know your, your vote has been counted. Okay, do we have extensions?
Hannah?
Can you ask my pad and paper and pencil? All right, the results, there were 58 yeses, 19 nos, and three extensions.
The, the total of the yeses and nos add up to be 77, two-thirds would be 52, so the motion is approved. All right, we'll move on to Article 10. All right. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $35 from the Osro Miller Trust Fund account to the Memorial Day expense account. And as... Make sure you don't remove your cards until you know your vote has been counted. Okay, do we have abstentions?
Hannah.
All right, the results, there were fifty-eight yeses, nineteen no's, and three abstentions. The total of the yeses and no's add up to be seventy-seven, two-thirds would be fifty-two, so the motion is approved. All right, move on to Article Ten. All right, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirty-five dollars from the Osro Miller Trust Fund account to the Memorial Day expense account. As further described in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Moderator, I still move.
Okay, moved by Mr. Baker.
Seconded.
Seconded by?
Tom Williams.
Tom Williams. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Baker.
This, I think this is our smallest article, but perhaps our most significant, I would say. For those of you who are new to town meeting, Osro Miller is, was an officer in the Union Army, came from Shelburne, led a troop of Shelburne Union soldiers into the Civil War and returned home. And founded the Grand Army of the Republic Post here in town. And those members who fought in the Civil War, by the way, are out on, their names are out on the obelisk in Arms Cemetery, so you can read about their service there. And join Jackie Goodman, who is, leads us in the Memorial Day celebration out there honoring their service and other veterans. But the Grand Army of the Republic Post actually donated the land that Memorial Hall, our town hall, is sitting on. So, that town hall is our Civil War memorial, thanks to Osro Miller and his compatriots.
Does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your yes cards. Down cards, all a no, raise your no cards. All opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is unanimous. All right, Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars from the Cowal Gym user fee account to the recreation account to be used to supplement the Cowal Gym director's salary. As further discussed in the, as further described in the warrant, or take any other action there relative thereto. So moved. Who is that? Mr. Lapierre, moved.
Ms. Biagi seconds.
Thank you. All right. All right, does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Article Eleven. They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of this motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to this motion, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to approve the listed revolving fund accounts as further described in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, Ms. Biagi moves that we approve this.
Seconded. Who seconded? I didn't see that. Oh, okay. Mr. Lapierre seconded, okay. Ms. Biagi, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, so this is as a revolving fund account. It's something that everybody uses every year. Money comes in and out, that's why it's revolving. And we have it on the warrant every year.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They support it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Okay, motion is approved unanimously. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars from the stabilization account to fund the listed capital expenditures as further described in the warrant. And just a reminder, because it's coming from the stabilization account, needs a two-thirds vote. So moved. It's moved by Mr. Lapierre. Is it seconded? By Mr. Baker. Okay, would Mr. Lapierre like to address the motion?
Just briefly, as you can see from the detail, the majority of these are payments of pre-existing purchases. Seventh of ten on Police Station Building, Dump Truck payment, three of four, et cetera. The only one that is different is the engineering and design for an emergency generator for proposed emergency shelter for five thousand dollars. Emergency Management Director, Tom Williams, may wish to speak to that briefly.
Yes, thank you. Tom Williams, Emergency Management Director, said in Taylor Road. Just like to give a brief explanation of what the five thousand dollars would be for. And also, hopefully answer a question that I know is out there as to why I'm proposing this line item prior to actually a location for upcoming emergency shelter. And I'll get to that brief explanation here shortly. What I've got right here is the town's hazard mitigation plan. This is a comprehensive five-year plan that a group of fellow residents took a year to produce. And it focuses on the vulnerabilities of natural disasters and how to mitigate them that would, you know, somehow maybe come to our town. These disasters, five years ago, this group of dedicated individuals looked hard into all the potential emergency events that we might encounter. The natural hazards such as blizzards, ice storms, severe winds, wildfires are becoming an issue, droughts, and things like that. And they then rated them as too low, median, high, as the possibility of them occurring. And one such event that did occur a few years ago, if we remember, March of twenty-three, we were hit with a blizzard that dumped fourteen inches of snow on us. And because of that, we had several blackouts throughout the town, power outages, and we lost cell phone coverage from that blizzard. And so, in addition to what this group looked at as far as vulnerabilities, they came up with a action items list of projects that we should undertake to help mitigate, or perhaps even eliminate, some of the hazards of these natural disasters. And one of those projects on the action items list was to develop an emergency shelter inside the town limits so that the residents of town would have a place to go in the event of a power outage. Now, what I have also here, this is my three-year plan that will address some of these vulnerabilities and improve our preparation and our response posture within the town. And one of the objectives and taskings in this plan is the development of a fully operational emergency shelter. Now, I've yet, we have not yet approved a location of that shelter, but I'll get into that a little bit more here shortly. To be fully operational, an emergency shelter obviously requires a backup generator in case of a power outage. Now, to procure a generator, we have to submit a request for bids, which is published so that local electrical contractors get a chance to bid on this. And in four, along with this published notice, you have to send out engineered plans and drawings and specifications so that the respective bidders have something to go by as far as what the resources were required and how much they cost. And that way, they can submit an accurate bid. Now, obviously, this means that we have to hire an engineer to produce those engineered plans. And the estimated cost for this that I've got is around five thousand dollars. That's how I came up with the five thousand capital expense request. Normally, like I mentioned earlier, normally a shelter location would be determined in advance of going out and asking for this money. But what I'd like to do is show you two timeline scenarios that illustrate how we can get a fully operational emergency shelter in two years rather than three years. Now, earlier I handed out, as you were coming in, I handed out a sheet of, a sheet that I have here. Gives the two scenarios. The first scenario is one where we, where the requirement comes out that we have to identify a shelter site first. That would mean shelter plan is approved by the Select Board in this upcoming fiscal year. But no funds are available to go out and get the engineered plans. We'd have to wait for approval at the next town meeting, which would be the next fiscal year. At that town meeting, I would submit a request for the funding. It's approved. The engineering study is completed. Request goes out for bids, the quote is received. But we can't move on that quote because we don't have the funds. We have to wait to the next town meeting to approve the funding for the emergency generator. So that's a three-year process. Now, if we go with the scenario, the second one I've listed on the page here, if you approve the funding tonight, then I can go out and, and we'll get the site approved sometime this upcoming year. At that point, I'll have the funding in hand to go out and hire the engineer to do the work for the specifications. And that means we would have the engineering design completed, request well for bids, I'd get a quote for the generator installation this coming year. So, at the next town meeting, we would submit the request for the installation of the emergency generator. The emergency generator is installed, therefore we accomplish this in two years rather than three. And therefore, my request for the approval of this portion of this warrant, please be approved. Thank you very much for your support.
Any further discussion on this, on this motion? Hearing, oh, hello.
Tom Hale, Two Thirty, Taylor Road. Just a matter of, please the mic. Can someone tell me how much?
Hi.
Mic, sir.
Yeah.
Can someone tell me how much money is in the stabilization account?
Is that something you haven't figured out? Terry?
Mr. Moderator, on the table, when everyone came in, there's a FY twenty-six budget overview, and it shows the balances of the stabilization account, the unrestricted, and the various restricted accounts.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me. Could you just quote me a figure?
Sure, if article, we have an article on here transferring our free cash into the stabilization account. If that passes this evening, we'll have a balance of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand seventy-three dollars in unrestricted stabilization. If all the articles pass tonight, a total of two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars will be left with a balance of four hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and twenty-one.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? Please identify yourself. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Winfrey. I'm at Ninety-Nine Main Street. My question is about this emergency generator for the proposed emergency shelter that we've just been listening to. I'm just wondering why we're not, why it has to be a new shelter rather than using an existing space? I'm just thinking about why would we want a building that's just dedicated to this?
It can be in an existing space.
Okay. I think the clarification is that it has not been identified yet which space is going to be used as the emergency shelter. So that's why that needs to be approved by the Select Board first. That is the question.
All right, any other discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. All right, Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the Housing Trust Fund account for a portion of expenses relating to the West County Food Pantry as further described in the warrant.
Moderator, I still move.
Mr. Baker moves.
Ms. Biagi seconds.
Thank you. All right, would Mr. Baker like to address this?
Yes, the proposed twenty thousand is to provide Shelburne's half of the expense needed to continue funding the West County Food Pantry for one more year. To provide some context, we have been, together with Buckland, have been supporting the pantry at that rate for a number of years using grant funds from our community development, our Community Development Block Grant Program that we have been successful in receiving for many years. We did not apply for a block grant this past year, mainly because we've pretty much done all the eligible projects that we can do within the block grant area, which is basically downtown Shelburne Falls. And our grant administrator retired this year as well. So, we had a gap in that funding, and the Pioneer Valley Community Action Program operates that food pantry on our behalf. And so, they came to us to say, could you keep it going for another year? And so, the Select Board recommended that we take this twenty thousand dollars out of the Housing Trust Fund, which is an eligible expense. The Housing Trust Fund is also money that came from past Community Development Block Grants and was loaned to low and moderate income homeowners in Shelburne many years ago, and was repaid back into that fund by those homeowners. So that's where we got that money. We have approximately ninety-five thousand dollars in that fund now. So if we vote that in, we'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-something thousand dollars left in the Housing Trust Fund. So that's how it works. We are, the Select Board is encouraging community action to seek other funding sources in this coming year if we approve this so that they can continue to maintain the food pantry, hopefully with other sources and with other participating towns, since it serves residents of other towns in addition to Shelburne and Buckland residents. So, we recommend this, or I recommend that we continue this food pantry for another year using these funds.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? All right, is there any further discussion? They approve, by the way. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer forty thousand five hundred dollars from the stabilization account to the Cowal Gym Maintenance and Repair Account to be used for a variety of improvement projects, deferred maintenance at the Cowal Gymnasium as further described in the warrant. So moved. Mr. Lapierre moves.
Seconded.
Mr. Baker for seconds. Mr. Lapierre, would you like to speak to the motion?
This is listed there, the things that we've discovered with our very capable Mr. John Walsh, so I would like him to speak to it briefly if he could. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, Main Street.
John Walsh, Main Street, Gym Director. So, last year we approved phase one of replacing windows as well as, um, some general maintenance of the building that had been deferred for many years. I had originally proposed about $120,000 to do both phases at one time, but the finance committee, the select board, felt that it was more appropriate to spread it out over two years. So, this year we will be finishing, uh, very shortly, the windows, all the windows in the basement and in the attic, which are major heat loss pieces. We had a grant from the state to actually replace the window shade in the gym. We cannot do the windows in the gym right now because of the cost to do those. So, this is the back part of the cowl gym facing Highland Village. It's called the tab room, it's an addition that was added many years after the original building was put in. If anybody's been in there, there's a door off the east side of the gym that is where the equipment is stored. When you go into that room, you'll find a door that just goes out to nowhere. I have put some insulation on top of it to stop some of the heat loss. The, the roof above all that is also a storage room. There's rot in that room. The siding is completely gone in places. I'd like to propose that we do, I, I, I've got some estimates of about $25,000 to $30,000 to do the whole thing with new siding, some new windows, a new door, a, a window to give light to the tab room. There's also some additional improvements that need, there are electrical boxes outside that are connected to no place that have no connectors, they're not wired off, they should be removed. There's slings loose on the back entrances. The, if you ever mind, the south side entrance, there's a emergency, uh, handicap button, which is no longer working. The whole post is rotting away. So, there are many of those little type of, uh, maintenance things that need to be replaced and should be all, uh, bring it back to a building that, that will last this for another, or 1936 to today, whatever that year is. If any questions?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. And we have an abstention, so the motion is unanimous. Article 16, see if the town will vote to approve the purchase of, of, I'm adding the word "of" there. I believe that's just an error, uh, an error of omission. So, see if the town will vote, uh, to approve the purchase of a police utility vehicle for $70,000 to meet this obligation, transfer $35,000 from the vehicle stabilization account and transfer $30,000 from the Town of Buckland's Shared Police Services Efficiency and Regionalization Community Compact Grant Account. Boy, that's a long name. And $5,000 to be reimbursed by the Town of Buckland per the Shared Police Services Agreement as further described in the warrant. Mr. Moderator, so moved. Mr. LaPierre moves.
Second.
And Mr. Baker, second. Mr. LaPierre, would you like to speak to the motion?
It's getting late, I think it's self-explanatory, but in a nutshell, it's a 2014 cruiser, it's history. It's time for it to go, it's in the normal process of capital turnover to keep, um, a sequence, to keep a proper sequence of vehicles being replaced. And, um, this will actually cover us in that cycle for at least a year, possibly two, because we did have two cruisers involved in accidents that insurance replaced new ones. So, our cycle is, um, going to be complete once we get this one done and then we'll have a breather for a bit.
All right, any other discussion?
Danielle Palatier, 303 South Shelburne Road. Uh, my question is, how often is the current 2014 cruiser being utilized? Also, a neighbor in town just recently went and got a new vehicle for their police department. They were advised by the dealership, there are several recalls and issues with this type of vehicle.
We can't hear you.
So, a neighbor in town ended up getting a, a recent police cruiser and they were advised by the dealership, there are several recalls and issues with this type of cruiser. And while on the, on the first year, they might be under warranty, there's still time lost with the vehicle not being on the road and serviced and also paying the officer to go back and forth with the dealership for repairs.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. Motion. Okay, it is a two-thirds, uh, vote, so we're going to take a count. So, counters, please. It's not unanimous, so we need to make a count. So, all in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. And please keep your yes cards up because there, there's some discussion as to whether, um, whether they, they may have missed one or two. So, let's, let's make sure they don't miss any. It's whether they could have missed, could miss one or two, let's put it that way. Okay. Now, all opposed, raise your no cards. And, are we all set with that? Okay, all abstain, raise your abst, abstain cards. All right. Are the counters ready? Okay, the yeses were 88, the nos were five, the abstentions were three. So, the motion is approved. Okay, Article 17, see if the town will vote to... Okay. Oh, certainly.
Reed Jerris, South Maple Street. Is there an hour at which this meeting will end and will be continued to another night?
There's no set hour. So, we could go as long as, you know, 24 hours if you want, but it's all up to the voting body here. Okay, if it gets too late, we will decide on what, what to do next then. Let's see if we can get through the rest of this. I'm going to do this next article and then we're going to take a five-minute break again. So, Article 17, see if the town will vote to approve the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department for $9,000 to meet this obligation, transfer $4,500 from the stabilization account and $4,500 to be reimbursed by the Town of Buckland per share, the Shared Police Services Agreement as further described in the warrant. Mr. Moderator, so moved. Mr. LaPierre moves.
Ms. Biagi, seconds.
Thank you. And, Mr. LaPierre, would you like to speak to this?
As the warrant article says, this is reimbursed to 50% level. The, uh, vests in question are expired. Who knew that, uh, protective vests for police officers had an expiration date, but they do? And these are, were expired last fall, I believe. Pretty much a no-brainer to me that we don't want our officers out there without the proper, uh, approved vests.
Any further discussion?
Danielle Palatier, 303 South Shelburne Road. My question is, how many vests is this actually replacing? And also, why is the federal grant not being utilized to go pay for these vests?
Okay, uh, somebody from, can't somebody address that? Oh, there we go.
Uh, Greg Bartwell, 84 Mechanic Street. I've got the number of vests that are being replaced. The federal grant is being utilized, uh, it does cover only up, uh, at a, excuse me, a minimum 50%. Patrick, uh, Lady Bulletproof Vests Program, we've utilized it for the last 20 years and it's been in the light of Shelburne. And... Yes, um, that's correct. Nine, uh, do, 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 nope, it's going to be six vests. And the quote that I got for each vest was $1,411. So, hearing the sound of caution, um, if we don't spend all of it, we typically give it back, but, uh, I requested...
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we need a two-thirds vote. If it's not unanimous, we're going to have to take a count. So, all in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. It's unanimous. Okay, what, depends on what the motion is.
Brad Walker, 84 Mechanic Street. Given the number of people who have left and the length left on the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn until tomorrow evening or a later date.
We have a motion to adjourn to a later date? Tomorrow evening or a later date?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it was seconded, okay, who made that motion?
Beth Barrett, 2127 High Street.
Okay. Hold on a second. All right. All right, we're going to take the five-minute break right now and then we'll come back with an answer to that. We're not adjourning, we're just taking a five-minute break. Okay, will the maker of the motion withdraw? And, and the second withdraw? And we'll take it up, you, you'll be allowed to make that motion in five minutes, will you re-attend? Thank you. All right, what about the second? Thank you, and we'll see you in five minutes. I'm going to... Okay, a, a motion, I'm going to, um, recognize Mr. Baker, he's about to make a motion.
Uh, thank you, I'm Brad, his delegated meeting for the details here. Andrew Baker, 38 Mechanic Street. And, um, given the forum issues and the need for the finance committee to be present, we're trying to, uh, balance the interests of, of, uh, timing. And the proposed, the motion that we're making is to, um, is to adjourn this meeting after Article 32 and reconvene, those are the fi, those are the, uh, money articles that require the finance committee to be present and to have a two-thirds vote. So, and then we would reconvene tomorrow night, Wednesday the 7th, at 6:30 at Memorial Hall Theater, 51 Bridge Street, Shelburne Falls. That's the motion. So, we would do the, we would do the planning board and the FERCog articles tomorrow night.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Brad Walker. Brad Walker, seconds. All right, and, um... Now, that means the motion is made to adjourn after we, um, after we go through Article 32, um, at, uh, to, the date is tomorrow's, what's tomorrow's date again?
7/7.
Okay, uh, so, May 7th of 2025 at 2:30.
6:30.
I mean, 6:30 PM. I did write 6:30, I'm thinking 2025 when I was writing it. So, yeah, at 6:30 PM at the Memorial Hall. Everybody understands that motion?
Memorial Hall Theater.
Memorial Hall Theater, yeah, upstairs, not downstairs. Okay, uh, is there any discussion? Oh, I don't hear any discussion, so we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. Okay, motion is approved. Wait a minute, what was? Did I hear something? No, it's a majority vote. Okay. All right. And we'll try to be as speedy as possible to get through to Article 32. So, Article 18, to see if the town will vote to approve the purchase of a new dump truck in the amount of $326,000 for the Highway Department and to meet this obligation, transfer the first payment of $83,130 from the Highway Equipment Stabilization... from the Highway Equipment Stabilization Account and finance the remaining balance over the, a four-year period as further described in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I so move.
Second. Mr. Baker moves, and I missed who seconded. Was that Mr. Lapierre? Okay. And Mr. Baker, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, this, briefly, this is our, one of our largest capital items, but, uh, the Highway, uh, Department needs this truck. And you can see, we've gotten twenty years of service out of the truck that it's replacing. Uh, this, and trucks take time to build, um, can take over a year. Uh, this is a, a truck that our previous superintendent began the process of, of, um, designing with this company. So it's been in the works, it's kind of, we will get it fairly quickly if we approve it tonight because it's been in the planning phases for a while. And, uh, if you have any questions about the details, our superintendent, Jeff Johnston, is here tonight and can speak, uh, in finer grain, but that's, uh, where we are with this truck.
All right, does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes card, or remember, it is a two-thirds vote. So raise your yes cards, down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to approve the purchase of a dump truck with stainless steel body and plow in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand thirty-eight dollars for the Highway Department, and to meet this obligation, utilize one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in Chapter ninety funding, and transfer the sum of forty-six thousand thirty-eight dollars from the stabilization account as further described in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I so move.
Mr. Baker moves.
Ms. Biagi seconds.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Baker, would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure, well, as you can see, we didn't get quite as much life out of our Chevy one-ton pickup as we did out of the two-thousand-and-five dump truck, um, which was unfortunate. We had a lot of rust on that truck and major repairs over the last couple of years that just made it not cost-effective to retain. Typically, we don't bring forward two big trucks in one year, um, but because, thanks to the, uh, the anticipated major increase in Chapter ninety, we felt we could, we could pay for this truck largely with the, the additional Chapter ninety allocation and still have Chapter ninety funding to do the needed roadwork. So that's our proposal this year. This'll bring us, uh, pretty complete with our major truck purchases for a while, and, uh, we hope we can turn to other, other things, uh, in the coming years. But generally, we, as you can see from the various funding streams and financing plans, that we're trying to spread these costs out over a number of years to keep our capital, um, uh, requests from spiking in any given year.
All right, does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed to the motion, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Okay, Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to transfer seven thousand five, five-hundred-and-twenty dollars from the stabilization account to purchase a stainless steel plow for the Highway Department as further described in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I so move.
Okay, and Mr. Baker moves.
Second.
Mr. Lapierre seconds. And Mr. Baker, would you like to speak to the motion?
Only that if you've, uh, been woken up early in the morning by hearing those plows rumbling past your house, you know that plows are doing the job and they wear out, so that's why we're voting this one in.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They support this article. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate by taxation two thousand dollars as a financial contribution to the fiscal year twenty-six, uh, Rural Downtown Coordinator Pilot Project as further described in the warrant.
Uh, Ms. Biagi moves.
Okay, and?
I will second.
Mr. Lapierre seconds. Okay, uh, would Ms. Biagi like to speak to the motion?
Sure, very quickly, this is a, uh, pilot project that FERCog has undertaken with the towns of Bucklin, Montague, Northfield, and Shelburne. Uh, this is just our portion to help fund that position for, uh, eighteen months.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. All right, this is out of the, does this come out of the stabilization account? Okay, so a motion is approved. Article twenty-two, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of ten thousand dollars from the Housing Trust Fund account to complete the pre-development, uh, environmental assessments of the property located at forty-nine Mechanic Street as further described in the art, in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I so move.
Okay, Mr. Baker moves. Any second?
I second.
Uh, who was that?
Andrea Griswold, thirty-eight Mechanic Street.
Andrea Griswold, okay. And, um, would Mr. Baker like to address this?
Yes, this is, uh, to provide some context for those of you who have been to town meeting in the last two years, um, this is step three in a, in a three-year process. We, two years ago, uh, approved town bylaws allowing us to, uh, redevelop non-conforming small lots, uh, like forty-nine Mechanic Street, which is located just over the way by the bandshelf there, um, next to the school here. That was a lot where a house burned down about twenty years ago. And, uh, the bylaw permits us to, to redevelop non-conforming lots as affordable housing. So we, as a town, voted that in two years ago. Uh, last year, we approved the financial articles to set up and create a Community Preservation Act Fund, that, uh, one of its three purposes is to, uh, promote and support the development of affordable housing. So the town has now voted twice in the last two years to put in place, uh, the mechanisms needed to produce affordable housing. So step three is to, uh, investigate whether or not that little non-conforming lot can actually be used by an affordable housing developer to put a house back on that lot after twenty years. We have an interested affordable housing developer, Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity does just that sort of thing. But in order for us to donate that lot to them, to help underwrite the affordability of their house, they need, um, some certification that the lot is indeed buildable. So, um, if we go forward in this direction, um, we need to do three things, uh, to, we need to determine if a lot has enough frontage, we need to do a wetlands delineation for the Conservation Commission, and then we need to do an environmental assessment to see if there are any major hazards, you know, like underground oil tanks or things like that that would prevent, uh, that project from moving forward. And we would do those things in that order, so that if the survey showed that there wasn't enough frontage, uh, we would not go to the next step. If there was enough frontage and we need to do a wetlands delineation that the ConCom need to approve, if that's not approved, we would not go to the environmental assessment. But if those two steps are approved, we would then do the environmental assessment and then hopefully be able to transfer that property and see it developed as affordable housing. So this is a step-by-step process. It takes a long time to develop affordable housing, and, um, if you want to continue to move forward in this direction, that's what this funding would be used for. I would, um, propose that we amend this article to, uh, add those, um, two other items, the survey and the wetlands delineation, um, so that we are clear about what we are using this funding for. Unfortunately, the warrant article language got a little shortened there inadvertently, but, uh, that would be my, uh, proposed amendment, not to change the amount, but to, uh, include the sort of three-step process. So, um, that's what I'm hoping the town will continue forward in our quest to develop at least one unit of affordable housing. We have not done that, um, in many years. The only affordable housing we actually own as a town is Highland Village. That's the only housing that actually qualifies as affordable by the state. So we would be adding one unit to our inventory if we're successful in this venture. But, uh, it requires, uh, investigation and determination to do the pre-development work if we want to move forward in that direction.
Can you please write that down?
Yeah, I just wrote it down and I...
Okay.
All right, well, what it will say is, if you read the first words of that Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer, oh, and then in the second sentence where it says, "said some shall be used," and then I propose to add the words, "to complete a survey, comma, a wetlands delineation, and..." And then the rest of it continues. So survey and wetlands delineation are what we're adding.
All right, do we have a second for the amendment? Ms. Williams, uh, seconded, uh... Ms. Williams, seconded. She, I recognized her, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, um, okay, so now we have a, oh, we have to vote on the amendment, and then we can go back to the original discussion. Okay, um, is there any discussion on the amendment? Are you clear on what the amendment is, so we don't have to review it? What's that? You, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
I don't know if this discussion is after the amendment or what, I don't know.
No, this is an amendment, discussion on the amendment itself.
No, I'm just discussing the whole thing.
Okay. Any other discussion on the, any discussion on the amendment? Okay. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Holly and I live on twenty-one Church Street.
Holly.
Santa, I'm here.
Yes, thank you.
I just have a question, if the ten thousand dollars isn't gonna change... If the ten thousand dollars that is allotted for this article isn't gonna change, but we've just added two very large items, survey and the assessment, how are those three numbers gonna be divided up? And do you have, like, is the ten thousand gonna cover all those three? Because that kind of makes a big difference.
I, I think we can do all of this for well under that ten thousand. I think we can get a survey done for about five hundred dollars and a wetlands delineation for a similar amount.
Who would be doing the survey for five hundred dollars?
Some, some friends of, of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, any other discussions on the amendment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the amendment, raise your yes cards. All opposed to the amendment, raise your no cards. Motion is approved. All right, as amended, we're back to the discussion of the article as amended. Now, um, does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Oh, can you go to the mic and do that, please?
Finance Committee does not support this article.
All right, any further discussion on the article? On the motion, I mean.
This is on the overall article, okay.
The article as amended.
Okay, the article as amended. Nick Donello, fourteen Church Street, Shelburne. Uh, I've got a pre-written, uh, statement here. Uh, in regard to Article twenty-two, which pertains to forty-nine Mechanic Street, to my knowledge, uh, the process of attempting to validate forty-nine Mechanic as a location suitable for affordable housing has been ongoing for a number of years without any involvement of the neighborhood or community. It appears this article was expedited onto the draft warrant within the last thirty days. I am very concerned that prior to this article being brought onto the warrant, none of the issues, uh, that are pertinent to this situation have been addressed. This has provided virtually no time for discussion, research, or to fully understand this matter prior to a vote being held tonight. Regarding logistical issues with the property, one that cannot be ignored is that according to the town's home tax maps, tax records, and the Shelburne access map, there is approximately forty-three feet of road frontage, which is approximately seven feet less than the fifty feet required by the recently amended bylaw accommodating affordable housing. There are no surveys of this property recorded with the Franklin County Land Court or the Franklin County Registry of Deeds, nor is there a survey for the abutting property owned by Richard Bishop. As of this moment, according to Article twenty-two, the town is asking taxpayers to pay for an environmental assessment on a property that legitimately appears to be non-conforming, part of which may actually belong to an abutter. I would ask, as of this moment, is the property actually for sale? And if Habitat for Humanity is interested in this property, as we are being told, what exactly are they offering to the town in exchange for the property? Are they not willing to make the investment in an, in, in environmental assessment, survey, and demolition of the barn and cleanup of the property? Why is the Town of Shelburne accommodating one particular potential buyer when in fact it is my understanding that the land must be sold at public auction? We are approximately eighty-five thousand dollars in arrears on this property as a town. As it is non-conforming, it could be sold without contingencies at auction. Can we justify this request to spend an additional ten thousand on a property that legitimately appears to be non-conforming? Again, without sufficient time set aside to have discussions involving neighbors and the community and to have these issues be addressed in support of the recommendation of a no vote by the Finance Committee, I am also asking you to join me in voting no on this article.
Any further discussion? First, I'm gonna recognize people who haven't spoken yet.
Andrea Griswold, thirty-eight Mechanic Street. I, I'm under the impression that most of the lots on Mechanic Street are non-conforming, so that's not unusual situations. However, I'd like, um, to hear about the benefits of the town to having, um, affordable housing. Of course, I mean, I have personal reasons in a town that's increasingly completely out of reach even for people who were born and raised in the area. But my understanding is that the, the towns need to have a certain percentage of their housing be affordable housing in order to maintain, um, certain controls over how land is developed, could you please speak to that?
Okay, and you've been, can we have them spoken to first?
Yeah, what, uh, Ms. Griswold is referring to is Chapter forty-B, which is a state law that permits developers to override, uh, local zoning in their affordable housing proposals. permits developers to override local zoning in their affordable housing proposals if the town has not met a 10% threshold of having 10% of its housing stock as, you know, certified affordable housing. We are below that threshold, so that's what she's referring to, is if the developer comes to town, they can override our zoning and do what they want effectively.
Okay.
Lisa Berkowitz, 88 Mechanic Street. Well, thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Mr. Baker.
Mr. Baker. I haven't attended the previous one, so you filled us in nicely for me. And it seems to me your amendment, especially the amendment you just did now, would help us understand the factors that we're trying to figure out to decide whether this can be affordable housing or not. And I just want to say that I really think we need affordable housing. They're looking at the world and just how hard it is for renters and for people of low income. Yeah, I just really think that it's important. I know that this...I've known of other cases in this town where people have really shot it down, and I just would like to see that change as someone who has low income and who understands that a lot of people really want a house. And hearing some of the other arguments too about, you know, the nonconforming, a lot of 88...a lot of Mechanic Street is nonconforming. I don't know. I just wanted to put...
Okay, I'm going to go to this mic over here.
Yeah, well, Andrew, 165A, Ramo's Road. I would like to begin by saying...
A little closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. While it's true that the substantial estate price is continuing, many young people who prefer to raise their families here are unable to even consider the possibility of ownership. Within this context, the state is mandating that communities provide 10% of their housing stock as affordable. This is an unfair burden on our communities that neither control wages, income, nor ever rising costs of renters' homes and land, nor do communities create poverty. Nevertheless, as people conscious, we cannot turn a blind eye to those who are without a home. Faced with this dilemma, and when considering Article 22, I respectfully suggest that we have several avenues of concern. The need to create policies and procedures regarding town ownership of properties, their proposed use and disposal, policies that will affect a wise and prudent fiscal approach in these matters, policies that will include neighbors and community decisions regarding future use, policies that take into account current state law. I feel we're working to reduce unfair burdens relating to poverty and unaffordable housing over which communities have no control. I would urge you to look at last night's select board meeting at which our select board member, Christian Gakaroni Biagi, did an enormous amount of research with Angela, our treasurer. We have in hand six properties that the town owns and has done with since 2015 as one of the earliest. On the total cost to the town, this is $450,728. The lost revenue plus cost incurred is $443.01. The annual taxes the town could receive in fiscal year '25 were these properties to be auctioned off. It would be $7,587.15. I suggest you vote no on this article.
Okay, any further discussion?
Wait, send her the... I'm wondering if we have a plan.
Speak right into it.
I'm wondering if the town has a plan for developing affordable housing. Yes, we have properties available, but has the planning board ever thought to provide this kind of information to us so that we're not caught off guard with a sudden announcement that we're going to develop X property? And the other thing is, I don't think the pieces, the parcel that we're talking about tonight meet our zoning standards. And why are we proposing to spend money when we're already up against the problem of it doesn't need our zoning? We can't change our zoning. The property should not be developed as such.
Somebody want to address that?
I would like to address that thing. So I want to make something clear when we're talking about nonconforming lots, and it is true that well over 80% of the lots in Shelburne do not conform to current zoning. So when we're talking about nonconforming lots, you can say, oh, yeah, well, nothing conforms, so what's the big deal? Well, the difference here, and I want this to be really clear to everyone, is that the planning board and the town actually did vote a couple of years ago to amend the zoning law specifically for affordable housing on town-owned properties. And that is very clear about what the stipulations are regarding frontage and square footage of that property. So it can be nonconforming, but if it doesn't have...and if it has 50 feet of street frontage and 10,000, I think it's 10,000 square feet total, then it can be used, and it's owned by the town, then it can be used to develop affordable housing. According to the maps that we've seen, the only official maps that we can use without a survey, that property does not even meet that 50-foot frontage threshold. So that just needs to be clarified, that we're not talking apples and apples when we're just saying nonconforming lots. This is a different animal altogether, I should say fruit, altogether, because it's a town-owned property that could be used for affordable housing, that still needs to meet some zoning criteria, which is the new bylaw for affordable housing only that requires 50 feet of frontage.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
I just want to address some of the concerns that have been raised by several speakers here. One is the question of, have we had enough neighborhood discussion about this? We...this was on the CPA docket and got moved to the Housing Trust Fund by the CPA. They recommended that we use Housing Trust Fund money before CPA money. That was the reason why the article moved from one place to the other, but we had written quite a bit about that over the last year. In terms of the questions of public hearings and discussion, there's not much to discuss until we determine whether the lot is even buildable. So that's what some of the other speakers have been addressing. In the conversations that I've had with my colleagues, they have brought forward maps about wetlands, showing that there's no way that this property can be developed because there's a wetland running right through it. According to the federal geological survey map, well, it turns out that the wetland specialist who came and met with our Concom Chair showed that that wetland, it was rendered moot decades ago by the...when BSE was built, and that stream was put underground. So the wetland is actually more than now 300 feet away from the property. So they don't think wetlands are an issue at all, or that they believe in finding much to delineate. In terms of the frontage, again, based on a map that shows an estimate that has not been measured, I actually...and you can do this too on your way home if you want. I went over there and walked off the front of that property and found somewhere between 60 and 65 feet, which actually matches the frontage on my property, which is a block away. So that tells me, eh, there's a pretty good chance that when they laid out this town, they were using about 60 feet of frontage. So I think that's worth spending 500 bucks to find out, is the property buildable? Then we can move on to the next step and make the next assessment. Is there any wetlands to delineate? For a small amount of money, we can probably determine that, and then we can go on to the environmental assessment. But that's the step-by-step process by which we can then, if those questions are all answered, have the public hearing that Nick and others want to have. If the property is not buildable, Nick will have the opportunity to purchase it at auction for probably a very nominal sum, because it won't be worth much.
Mr. Moderator.
The last thing I want to say is that the valuations that have been left on this property and the other five are completely fictional, that these are properties that once had buildings on them that nobody now owns. And so if somebody were to own them in the future and purchase a non-buildable lot, it's not going to be worth $80,000. They're going to come to the assessors and say, I would like to get this reassessed, because I'm not paying taxes on an $80,000 non-building lot. So that's the process that you go through in dealing with tax title properties.
Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Upier.
We've heard the maker of the motion twice in quite detail. We have people lined up to speak to it, and I thought we had agreed to let people have a first crack at it for repeat.
Well, he was answering some of the questions from earlier, but...
There's been many...
Go ahead, Ms. Walsh.
So I don't think this property is our answer for affordable housing. An abuser would like to buy it, and I think as a caring community, at some point, we should close the door on that for him. Also, the CPA allows a different path to affordable housing, which is we provide money for people to have first, last month, and security deposits. It goes to Franklin Housing Authority. I am totally not opposed to building affordable housing, but this might not be our answer.
Anybody else then would like to speak to this?
Owen Braggan, 40 Main Street. I am hearing a lot of, you know, good arguments, and thank you, everyone who's spoken, for the clarifications on the specifics of this property, but just generally speaking, affordable housing is a very urgent issue. I have lived in the same apartment for almost seven years, and the reason is because I know that if I, you know, if I leave, it would be very hard to come back to this community. So hopefully, this, you know, this property or some other property could be our answer for affordable housing, but it is a very pressing issue and not just something that we should be looking to pick down the road.
Mr. Williams.
Tom Williams, 7 Taylor Road. We all know how skyrocketous the pricing of housing is nowadays. It's just way out of whack, and I think anytime that we can come up with some affordable housing within the town, I think it's a great idea. We all know the benefits of homeownership, what it does to a community, how it stabilizes a community, and I think the plan that Mr. Baker's come up with is a good one for this particular lot, but I think we ought to also look at this lot and the other lots that are around town that we've been kicking a can around for these past several years. Affordable housing is a big need, and I think we ought to go for it. We're right.
I'm still Reverend Dr. Brian Johnson. 8 Church Street, noticing what time it is, so it's amazing that so many people are here. Having been someone who's worked with Habitat for Humanity, both the international chapter as well as local chapters over the last 20 years, the partnership and collaboration that occurs when you have the opportunity to work with an institution that was founded by Jimmy Carter is an amazing opportunity, and I just...and we're just asking to pursue the question. We're not...my understanding of the motion is that we are just investing to see if it's a viable parcel of land.
Any further discussion?
Will Finders, 7 Warren Court. And I'm on the planning board, and I was part of the group that put these two earlier pieces into proposal a couple of years ago, setting up the situation we have now. I'm also chair of the CPC, the Community Preservation Act Committee, that is giving out money for CPA money. We'll talk about it tomorrow. But we turned down the proposal that we spend CPA money to do what Andrew's suggesting now. And the reason we did that is because there's housing, there's a Housing Trust Fund which is available to the town to explore these kinds of things in housing in town. So we decided in CPC to not spend CPC money on money that's available to the town already. So Mike and I, I'm a strong advocate of affordable housing, and I think that the suggestion that Andrew's made this time is that we support the first question, you know, we sequence those questions in order that makes sense. If it's not, you know, if we explain the red sign. The other thing is that CPC can actually do...that's one of the things we can spend our money on is affordable housing. And we're starting to, we realize that we actually can initiate those things ourselves, and that's part of our conversation coming up for next year, is how we're going to, how we can move forward and maybe create a plan to do affordable housing in town.
Mr. Taylor.
John Taylor, 10500 Road. I'm going to probably just affirm what's already been said. I happen also to be a member of the Zone Board of Appeals. I will concur that when you think about lots in the village, the lots are small, and the town over the years in the 60s made big lot sizes because that was the thing to do. But now, there's a recognition that those numbers are not appropriate, maybe is the right word for the village. You have to consider, there was a house that sat on that lot for 100 years. So somehow, if anybody says it's inappropriate to have a house there because if the lot is too small and the neighborhood is too crowded, or whatever it is, there's a house that sat there for 100 years. So somehow, in those 100 years, the people survived. And actually, the place, the best place for affordable housing, in my opinion, is here in the village, because it's a walkable village. So I don't make assumptions, but many families that need affordable housing do not have three cars, or three cars and an RV and a couple pickup trucks. They have one car that maybe they have to share with the whole family. So again, having affordable housing in the walkable village is a good idea. Obviously, if it's not 50 feet, we're in trouble. But hopefully, Andrew can find that it's 62 feet or 40, 53 feet or whatever it is. But I do support affordable housing. I think it's something the town needs to have a legitimate discussion on, because all that discussion on 40B is real, and we need to be ahead of the curve and not wait for somebody to come in and give us a lesson in how to circumvent the zoning laws.
Does anyone else have anything on this? Any further discussion?
Jason Chrismore, 37 Mechanic Street. I just have a couple of questions. Is the expectation that it would be a rental unit, and would it be a single? Or would it be a unit that would be available for somebody to purchase as a...because I actually volunteered on a Habitat for Humanity project that the, a family was able to purchase. And my second question was, like, if this was to pass and these studies were done, will this come before the voters again, before it moves us to the next level?
Yes. So to answer your questions there, Jason, I have been meeting with Megan McDonough, who's the director of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity. She lives up in Coal Range. She's been down to look at the property. Pioneer Valley Habitat develops single-family homeownership opportunities. So I did ask her the question, would you put a little rental apartment in the back to help that person out? And she said, no, they just do single-family housing. So it would be pretty much putting, as John mentioned, John Taylor, the same kind of house that was there 20 years ago. Sorry, what was your other question? Oh, and yes, it would come before the voters, because the select board would have to take a vote to transfer that property to Habitat if that was their decision. to transfer that property to Habitat if that was their decision.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any new information?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Williams.
So I do not want to belabor the point. I understand that one house represents a lot of change for one neighborhood, a small, I think, pretty cohesive neighborhood. I think to John's point, there had been a house there for a hundred years. I spent the last twenty years of my life developing affordable housing and doing forty Bs, so we can talk about that. But I think for me, I joined the planning board after this body approved these changes because I really believe in affordable housing. And I think a lot of people who've lived in the village for the last twenty-five years, when they moved here, might have qualified to be a Habitat-building family. So you're inviting a new family that wants to be a part of the community. And I think that's really important. Thank you.
Anything new?
I have one more point, I have one more point or a question.
You spoke to it earlier?
Yes.
Is this new?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the wording was, Andrew said, the wording was donating the land to Habitat? There's no offer of exchanges of money? The town is not going to be getting paid money compensated? It's a donation, is that my understanding?
That would have to be a decision of the select board, but that would be my proposal. When you look at, as Will mentioned, when you look at communities that have used CPA money to subsidize affordable housing, the town of Leverett was offering write-down money of seventy-five thousand dollars because their housing is cost over four hundred thousand dollars out there, as does ours. So if we were to donate this property to Habitat for Humanity, we would be doing about that kind of in-kind donation as the town of Leverett does with their CPA money. So that's one possibility. We could see what the market would bear. I think what we will find is that there aren't other affordable housing developing organizations out there who are going to bid on that property. But we would certainly, if this proposal moves to that stage, we would put out a request for proposals so that anybody who wanted to develop affordable housing could come forward with a proposal. That would be that step in the process. But we are, as we've mentioned, a number of steps away from that step.
All right, anything? This will be the last question, then we will proceed to vote. It is eleven o'clock.
With Sanford, Maple Street. There is a huge need for affordable housing in this community. There's no doubt in my mind. But it bothers me that out of the blue, we've picked one parcel and not assessed all the parcels that we might want to develop for affordable houses. Why is this property better than the others that are evidently in the village? I think we need to look at the issue more holistically so that we have a reason and a will to develop affordable housing as a community. This is just kind of shooting a bullet in the air and hoping it lands in the proper place.
Can someone address that question? Why this property?
The reason why this property has come forward is this is one of two properties in the village that the town owns through tax title. I don't know of any other properties in the village that the town could currently consider for affordable housing. But we actually own this property. That's, it's not random. That's why, that's why it's on the map.
All right. I'm going to call the question. So all those in favor of the motion, please raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. I do need to count because it's close. So will the counters please get in place? All right, all in favor, please raise your yes cards.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Remember, the counters counting row by row, so... Okay, can we have all the no votes?
Thank you all.
Okay, all abstentions? While we're waiting for the count, when you leave tonight, make sure you put your cards and set them on the table where you checked in so that we have for future meetings, like tomorrow night. And you will need to check in tomorrow night also. Okay. It requires a majority vote. The yeses were forty-one, and the nos are forty-one. Abstentions were three, so the motion is defeated. Okay, we'll move on to... Unless anybody wants to take a five-minute break, or we can just keep going. All right, we'll keep going. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty-one thousand dollars from the Cowell fees reserved for appropriation account for the renewal of the outdoor courts at Cowell Gym.
Mr. Moderator, so moved.
As further described in the warrant.
Sorry. Mr. Moderator, so moved.
Okay, Mr. Lapierre moves.
Ms. Biagi seconds.
And Mr. Lapierre, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, the, um, the Recreation Committee was unable to participate this evening. Oh, you're here! Oh, my goodness, I hadn't seen you. I would like the moderator to recognize Mr. Norman Beebe, Chair of the Recreation Committee.
Mr. Beebe.
Hi, everybody.
You need to identify yourself, please.
I'm Norman Beebe, sixteen Mechanics Street. This is twenty-one thousand dollars. We originally hoped to fund the CPA fund. They turned it down because they felt we had a non-viable source of funds that's somewhat debatable. But it turns out we have a Cowell user fee account that generally goes to supporting Cowell and other things.
My...
We're proposing that twenty-one thousand be taken out of that account. And what it would do is it would patch the cracked courts. It would expand it so we can paint a couple additional pickleball courts. The pickleball courts would not overlap with the basketball courts, so that's a good thing. And then we would... Those of you might remember that in 2017, we actually just had those redone. They did a few job. Unfortunately, they developed cracks over the years. And it's actually quite serious, which is why this really needs to go forward. So I hope people will spot it.
Does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They support it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is unanimous. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund annual revenues in the amounts shown for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2026 as further described in the warrant.
I move the article. Mr. Moderator.
Seconded. Okay, Rick seconds. All right, would Tricia like to address this?
Well, I'd like, if Will Flanders is still here, could you please address this article?
Okay, Mr. Flanders.
Will Flanders, seven Warren Court. The CPA requires that we set aside a certain percentage of money that we can raise through our taxes.
Be really close to the mic.
Okay. Okay, is that a letter?
Yes.
All right. So we have to set a certain percentage aside for various things. And they are listed right here. Historic preservation, community resources, open space, and general budget reserve. So we have to set aside ten percent of money. So this is our guess of what we think will be appropriate for the money we're going to raise for fiscal point states.
Okay. And does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They support it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimous. Okay, Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars in community preservation funds for Phase One of the Buckland Shelburne Elementary School Playground Restoration Project. To meet this obligation, transfer twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars from the Open Space Recreation Reserve Account and seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars from the budgeted reserve account as further described in the warrant.
So moved.
Ms. Biagi removes. And Mr. Flanders, second. And Ms. Biagi, would you like to address this?
I would defer to Mr. Flanders.
Okay, Mr. Flanders.
Okay, this is our first year of spending our CPA money, some of it. We're not spending it all. And this project is one that the school system won't fund, even though it could be readily funded if they wanted to, but they didn't have the money to do it. So the PTO came and decided, it's like, let's raise the money for ourselves and it can happen. So there's a... So we, as a CPA committee, we decided this is a perfectly good thing to happen in our community. And not only is it, we looked at the possibility that the school might not continue to continue here, but we like the idea that this is a community resource. The people come here, I live in this neighborhood, I come and use this to swing, you know, for myself. And so this is a community place where people bring their grandkids on weekends and all other times. And so it's a dangerous place right now. We think it's really important to improve the school playground. And the first phase, this is only first phase. First phase is for the kindergarten and preschool playground. There's three playgrounds here. This is the one for the one that gets in the back. I'm not sure exactly where. But this is the one that seems to need the work the most repair. And so the PTO agreed that's because they're going to spend that hundred thousand dollars versus yes that we spent precisely on those kinds of improvements. So we're, you know, we like the idea that we were unanimous in our CPC committee to approve this program.
Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? Do you want to please?
Todd, you were a part of the Finance Committee. And we're not against the playground. First, I want to say that that's not our... We are concerned with the future of BSC. Whether it's going to be there, the ownership of the school may be down the years. The school may be going into a one-campus, rapid-mobility. And the other thing we were, the other concern was if this is capital, should this be a project that is multifaceted over a few years? Should that be split with them? So those are the concerns we have over that article.
All right, any further discussion? All right, you and then...
Hi, I'm Planner Dyer. I'm not a Shelburne resident, but I am the spearheading the playground from the PTO. And so I'm spearheading the playground initiative. I apply, and I'm not allowed to speak.
You need to ask permission to speak.
Oh, may I speak, please?
Is there any, is there any objection to her speaking? Okay, go ahead.
I just want to respond to the concerns raised by the financial, the Finance Committee. While the Mohawk Trail has voted to recommend the two-D eighteen plan to consolidate our schools, that proposal needs to be approved by all eight towns, and there's no guarantee that that will occur. Even in the event of a single-school campus regionalization, this district would be consolidated over five to seven years. And it's my understanding that, given the capacity of BSC, it's likely that BSC would actually absorb more students during that interim while the new school is being built. So yes, there is uncertainty about how the property would be used down the line. But what is certain is that the current playground poses ongoing risk, and it's not ADA accessible. It is the only playground in town, and it is heavily utilized outside of school hours. In fact, almost all of the six broken bones that occurred in the last year occurred during off-hours. Having a playground that is accessible and safe is important for the community. Just as we discussed earlier in this evening, having a playground is a lot like having a library. It provides a place for folks to gather. And a new ADA-compliant playground for all kids in the community to have a safe place to come together, I believe, is a core value for, should be a core value for the town. And so that's just my response to the Finance Committee concerns.
Okay, Mr. Bragdon.
I, Owen Bragdon, forty Main Street. I was mostly going to make all those exact same points. But just to reiterate a little bit, if BSC does end up closing for, you know, if that does come to pass, I think it would be a great use of this space to have a playground as it currently is accessible to everyone. So there's no reason why the school closing should mean that the playground is not a good thing to be best in.
Mr. Cusmano?
Jason Cusmano, thirty-seven Mechanics Street. I actually, as much as I love the initiative and I think we need to update the equipment, I do have similar concerns to the Finance Committee. And I, I'm somewhat concerned that it's a Shelburne-only initiative. And, you know, I would feel better if Buckland was matching it. And I also wonder about, you know, the longevity of this school. And I'm wondering if there's any chance that it could be shifted to, I believe, the town owns the parcel next to the van shell. And if we're going to invest this amount of money, you know, on a portion... And if we're going to invest this amount of money, you know, on a portion of the upgrade, could we consider doing it on town land versus the school land?
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Mr. J...
Jason, we actually do not own the land on the Banshell side of that property. We own the land to the west. Way over to the west.
The property in question, a 49 Mechanic Street, actually does abut property that the BSC property.
Okay.
And that 49 Mechanic Street does belong to the town.
All right.
My name is Ben Ossel, 106 Shelburne Center Road. 106 Shelburne Center Road. My name is Ben Ossel. I'm in support of this article. I have three kids that go here at BSC, and, you know, I've got a skill in the game. I have... I'm a PTO fundraiser, and I would really like to see this playground built, because when you go to other towns...
Speak right close to the mic. You can raise it.
This is better. Okay. When you go to other places and you see the playgrounds that have been built in the last 50 years, I mean, we're missing it. And, you know, these kids love this playground, and they love it to death. I mean, it is just, it's awareness. So it would be really nice to have something that matches the capability of our kids to go out there and play. I'm very much in favor of this article, and I hope that you guys vote yes.
Mary Lydell, 203 Shelburne Center Road. I'm going to beat the drum. I beat before, but I'm going to do it briefly. I agree that we need a playground in town. I agree that it's a wonderful thing for the community. I want to see it built, but I think the process is a little backwards. I was on the CPA committee when they voted on this, and I did vote for it. But I believe it's a school responsibility on school property, and that we should be looking at sharing it with Buckland, and that needs to be addressed before Shelburne puts too much money into it. I do think that we need a better playground and a safer playground. But during the CPA review of this request, we did ask the people who brought it to us what the school's investment was in the playground currently, and they checked with the school principal, and were told that there was no money invested in the playground for maintenance of that playground. And yet there are six broken bones on it. If somebody broke their bone on my property, I would find out why, and I would fix the problem if there was something that needed to be fixed. They have put money into the playground, was what we were told, but it was $2,000 for wood chips. It was nothing towards maintenance. So I'd like to see the school more involved in this. I'd like them to take responsibility, and I'd like them to be, the town to work with the school to figure out what really is in the best interest.
Is there any further discussion?
My name is Jen Hale, 230 Taylor Road. I'm on the CPA committee. I guess the point I want to make is that funding, you get funding. So if we put $100,000 into this program, this project, it's just the first phase, and we can go to the town of Buckland and say, we put $100,000 down. So would you please put some money down, too? And we can go... And they may not say yes, but this project, once it's been funded, it shows that there is community support, and there could be more funding. And the school, you know, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen to the school, but the kids of Shelburne need this. So I'd like to encourage everyone to vote for it. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
John Taylor, 105 Mainers Road. So let me make some observations here. First of all, I think that this whole idea that this is one school, one campus program that's going to happen in five to seven years, it's not going to happen in five to seven years. It's just not going to happen. So let's just take that off the table. Because you have to have all these towns vote for it to close their schools. How long did it take for Hoot to close their school? It's not going to happen very soon. That's number one. Number two is, we could increase the school budget by $100,000, but we've already heard that we don't want to give the schools any more money to put toward their playgrounds or anything else, because we can't afford that. So that's not an option. So we can not support a playground and have families who live in town be like, that's unfortunate that BSC's playground is unsafe, and the town doesn't want to support stuff like that. And maybe we should send our kids to some other school, so that our tax money will go somewhere else. That's not a very good option either. And I guess I start going through the logical options of this, and it just seems like having a playground in Shelburne, it's our responsibility, it's our town, it's going to be here, even if the school was to leave, which is not going to go in very soon. The playground's going to be sitting here in Shelburne. It's way more convenient for somebody on Southern Street to get there than somebody up on North Street in Buckland. So, I mean, I used to live on South Maple Street. We were here all the time with the kids, because this is a great place, and the playground is fun. So that was a little time ago, but I support this. I just, I don't know, I just think we're chasing things that would just support a playground and have fun.
Any further discussion? Wait a minute. Anybody?
I do have a question for this, the would-be speaker here.
Oh, okay. Well, then she'll be able to speak then, yes.
That's right. I guess my question is, what has your conversation with the town of Buckland been?
So we went to the town of Buckland's Land Board. They encouraged us to apply for a capital, make a capital campaign request. They said that the funds from selling the police fair to be realized next year, and they were hoping to invest in this project. They did not say that they would match Shelburne. They didn't make any promises, but they did encourage us to apply more supportive of the initiative. Can I add a little bit to that?
If it's...
If anything else.
If it's to answer the question.
Well, it was to answer the idea that the $100,000 investment makes it possible for us to apply for additional grants and to fundraise more effectively. And while we can't guarantee funds are coming from Buckland, we have been able to leverage this into requesting our state rep and our state senator to earmark funds for us. And right now, there's 25K in the proposed budget at the state level for the project from Natalie Blay, and that Paul Mark has indicated he would go up to $100,000 as well. So playgrounds are, from the research we found, $350,000 to $400,000 if they're truly ADA accessible. So this is what makes it possible for us to really pursue a truly inclusive and fun playground for our community.
Is there any further discussion? I'm going to recognize her first, because I saw her first. Identify yourself.
Beth Fair, I'm 27 High Street. So it occurs to me that habitat where she'd rather be might be very skilled at building playgrounds. Okay, that's just a no. Okay.
All right. That was quick.
Brad Walker, 84 Mechanic Street. Two points here is, I reiterate, Jason's, which is that what we locally would think of as BSC is the three lots. If in a decade, or two, or three, this no longer becomes a school, it would be logical for us to consider this playground on either the Banshell lot, so they could more easily be parceled off to the town, or the town-owned lot up on West End, so that we don't have to work on... It could make our lives easier in ten years. But also, having an agreement placed now, we've already seen some, a little bit contentiousness between what is capital, what is maintenance, is the school for the town responsible for it, et cetera. It would make sense to have a formal MOA or MOA place prior to beginning the building of this project to find out who's in charge of maintenance, who's in charge of annually inspecting it. Anytime you do this, when you build a $400,000, $500,000 playground, you've got to know that this can cost students $20,000 a year maintaining it. Otherwise, we're replacing it each.
All right. Further discussion?
I'm Maya Winfrey, and I live at 99 Main Street. And I just want to say, these playgrounds, I went to elementary school here, and they were so safe. So it's time, it's time. I have kids in elementary school here now, one in 3K and one in first grade, and they need a playground. You know, the kids here need playground that's safe, and I just really encourage you all to support. This is a time when the PTA is really getting it together to raise money from all kinds of different sources. They're asking for the support of the town, but this is a project that's, people are running the other money and the other energy to do this, so it seems like a great time to take advantage of that. So I encourage you all to do that. Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Owen.
Wait a minute.
Sorry.
You spoke already. Is there any new information?
Well, I was going to say something, but if you don't want to, that's okay.
All right. If it's new, go ahead.
Well, sorry, we haven't...
Oh, all right.
Oh, Manitansley, 91 Mechanic. I'm just not clear, would we get to vote again on something like, could it go on a different lot? Like, are we just moving the funds, and then how and where it gets built? Is another discussion, or, like, would those things be considered in the future? If we vote yes now, is that just, we're done? Would have some opinion?
All right. Mr. Flanders, you could answer that question.
I can answer that question.
Okay.
We approved $100,000 for the very specific Phase One of this project, which is going to be built over here apparently in a month. We did not approve $100,000 that might be spent at some other point or at some other place for a playground. So we have, and my understanding of the CPA law is that this, the question is, do you approve what we're recommending or not? There's no amendments, no nothing. It's a yes or vote, yes or no vote. And if you don't want it, okay, then we'll do something else next year. But we can't just change it and decide, well, you know, a bunch of people would like to have it some other place, so we'll just skip to this issue.
All right. Any further discussion? Then if you have something new to contribute.
I think I can do that.
All right. Hearing there's no other discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 in community preservation funds to the Arms Library LULA replacement project. To meet this obligation, transfer $22,500 from the Historic Resources Reserve Account and $22,500 from the Undesignated Reserve Account as further described in the warrant.
Ms. Biagi moves.
Next second. Mr. Lapierre, seconds? Okay. Lapierre. I'm sorry. It's a little late. All right. Would...
I'd like to recognize Mr. Flanders to discuss this article, please.
Mr. Flanders.
Okay. This is our second project, and...
Will, you took the mic. I'm supposed to turn it off, but there.
Better? Okay. All right. The library is, the elevator is very dangerous. People get stuck in it in between the two floors. Not very good. And it's for handicaps, people within wheelchairs essentially, or people who can't walk upstairs easily. So they went, they have raised everything except for the $45,000 that we are proposing. They've, several hundred thousand dollars, I don't remember how much it was, but this is the last piece they needed to get this done. And so we think it's a beautiful community project with the upgrade itself, but also we want to make it accessible to everybody who wants to go there.
All right. Is there any further... First of all, does Finance Committee have any recommendations on this article? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is passed unanimously. Okay. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $8,000 in community preservation funds to the Hill Cemetery Restoration Project. To meet this obligation, transfer $8,000 from the budgeted reserve account as further described in the warrant.
Ms. Biagi moves.
Yeah, I second.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Flanders to discuss this article, please.
Okay. So the Hill Cemetery, I'm sure with the commission, it's had been spending town money on restoring the cemetery. And at this point, they need $8,000 to complete that process. And so that's, we went, yeah, let's complete it. Let's preserve part of our important historical resources.
Does Finance Committee have any recommendations on... They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Okay. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,000 from the Kennedy Preservation Funds Undesignated Revenue Account to purchase a bulletin board for the Cowal Gym outdoor courts as described in the warrant.
This is the last CPC-related or CPA-related article, and I move this.
Okay. And Will Flanders, second.
And I'd like to recognize Will Flanders again.
Okay, Mr. Flanders.
Okay. Is this close enough? Good. All right. So, you know, this is one of the proposals, and it seems like a project that would be really useful up at the Cowal Gym. It's pointing people towards programs that are available and various activities that happen in the Cowal Gym. And the hours, for example, the food pantry is available there. And there's a clothing situation happening there, but nobody, I don't know what the hours and months are. But having a bulletin board that says this is what's happening in this facility, it seems like a good idea.
Does Finance Committee have any recommendations? They approve. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Oh.
Mary Lydell, 203 Shelburne Center Road. I don't believe this is written correctly. I think the application was for two bulletin boards, one by the outdoor courts and one by the building, so that people could know what activities were going on at each place. It's a small point. The amount is right, but it's two bulletin boards, not one.
Is it okay if we make that a friendly amendment? Is there any... Okay. We'll call it two bulletin boards. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Okay, motion is unanimous. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to transfer $353,986 in free cash to the Unrestricted Stabilization Account as further described in the warrant. So moved. Mr. Baker moves.
Ms. Biagi seconds.
Okay. And would Mr. Baker like to speak to the motion?
This is surplus funding that's free and clear of any decisions we've made tonight, so this is going straight from free cash to stabilization and will be available for future capital projects.
Okay. Does the Finance Committee have any recommendations? Okay, does the finance committee have any recommendations on this? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Okay, article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or otherwise provide the sum of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, the town of Shelburne's share of the cost of the operation and maintenance of the Shelburne Falls wastewater treatment facility, as further described in the warrant.
Moderator, I so move.
Mr. Baker moves. In a second. Was that Miss Lapierre?
Yes.
Seconds. All right, would Mr. Baker like to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm putting on my hat as a Shelburne sewer commissioner. And just to clarify, this article and the two that follow it, which will be our last for the evening, are specific to the Shelburne Sewer District, which is really just in the village. So these articles, these three articles are to raise funds to support the sewer district and are paid only by the ratepayers of the sewer district, but the vote needs to come from the entire town of Shelburne. So all of you outside the sewer district get to vote for free, and the rest of us get to put ourselves on the hook for this amount.
Does the finance committee have any recommendations on this article? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or otherwise provide the sum of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, the town of Shelburne's share of the operation and maintenance of the Shelburne Pumping Station, as further described in the warrant.
So moved.
Mr. Baker moves. Second. Mr. Lapierre, seconds. Okay, Mr. Baker, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, this article is just broken out separately because the previous article thirty was half of the costs that we share with the Buckland Sewer District on the other side of the river. But we do have some additional expenses that are specific to the Shelburne side, the main one being the pumping station, which brings us across the river to the sewer treatment plant. So that's, these additional funds are not, not split with Buckland, but are just ours.
Does the finance committee, they approve. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. And this is the last one of the night, and then we're going to adjourn to tomorrow night at six-thirty over at Memorial Hall Theater. And that's, we'll be at six-thirty. So we'll be, hopefully get a little bit of rest between now and then. So article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the sewer enterprise account to pay the town share of capital expense repairs related to the operations of the sewer treatment, as further described in the warrant.
So moved, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, Mr. Baker moves. And seconded, Mr. Lapierre, seconds. Okay, would Mr. Baker like to address this?
Yeah, the enterprise fund is the sewer district's version of the stabilization account. So this is where we put our unspent surplus, and we get to use it to buy capital equipment. So these three items, the truck, the crawler camera, which actually travels under the ground and photographs the inside of our pipes to find out where the trees are entering and other repairs need to be made, those are the things that we're spending our capital dollars on.
Finance committee have any recommendations? They approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, raise your yes cards. Down cards, all opposed, raise your no cards. Motion is approved unanimously. And just a reminder, these cards here, make sure you leave them on the table outside as where you registered, and they'll be ready for tomorrow night. Thank you very much. It is now eleven forty-two.